Welcome, everyone. Thanks for making it out tonight. I'm going to call the July 25th, 2022 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by me, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can. Royal Oak was named, once again, one of the best places to live in the United States. We are so blessed to live in a city that is safe, vibrant, and full of life. We enjoy this privilege because so many people put others first, often ahead of their own needs. We see this everywhere and every day, whether on the ball field or by the actions of our first responders. Royal Oakers put their values to work every day. I feel so proud and grateful that my kids will grow up in a community that embraces diversity and equity, promotes a sustainable future, cares for its most vulnerable, and makes a broader definition of safety a priority. There's a lot going on in the global national level to be concerned about. If you ever feel overwhelmed, I ask that you look inward, and you look to your neighbor, and hopefully there you'll find a dose of hope. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That's a different chair. It's pretty heavy.
Still has to have a new one.
Tested my dad's strength here. All right. All right, that brings us to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Commissioner Macy.
So moved.
Would you like to make any additions to that agenda? Commissioner Macy.
I would. How perceptive of you, Mayor.
I just, you know, telepathy, I just feel very strong tonight.
I'd like to move approval with the addition of an item to proceed as discussed.
In closed session.
In closed session on the Water versus City of Royal Oak case.
Perfect. Okay, that'll add to number 15, tonight's agenda. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collo. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Motion passes. Establishing the agenda. All right, that brings us to item five. Oakland County Main Street Presentation of Main Street Accreditation. See Mr. Fettness here and Mr. Brake?
I believe our downtown manager, Daniel Hill, will be speaking to make the introductions to this presentation.
Wonderful.
Thank you for having us tonight. With me is Annika Norris from Main Street Oakland County, who will give the presentation on accreditation.
Hi, good evening. I don't want to take up too much of your time this evening, but I would like to present the accreditation plaque this year for downtown Royal Oak being accredited within the Main Street program. It does take a bit of work to be an accredited program. There are some courses, there are take trainings, attend meetings with other managers throughout the county, follow the four points of the Main Street program, which is, I always like to, it's easiest to remember by DOP, which is Design Organization Promotion and Economic Vitality. And it's just, this goes for all the hard work that the Downtown Development Authority and Main Street program do to stay in the program. Wanted to take a moment to present the plaque. Thank you. And if it's all possible, if we could get a photo, it's kind of something we do every year to put a little promotion out there for all the good work, because it does take the council supporting the DDA and the Main Street program to be very successful.
We have excellent DDA, vibrant business community. I mean, I shout out to the base.
It's a big logo if we go in the center.
Before we commence, just a couple of quick rules, a couple of comments. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help us make informed decisions. Now is time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, both on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait till recognized by me, Mayor Fournier, then come up to the podium. For the record, you can state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate to reach out to us via email or in the grocery store, or in the street, wherever you find most comfortable to bring your issues to our attention. Please note that we typically don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed, or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled on the agenda. Our city manager is also taking copious notes, and we'll look into matters as needed. With that, who's first?
Good evening, members of the Royal Oak Commission. My name is Michael Pesendorfer, and I am the owner of M3 Investment Services on Main Street, and I also make my home in Royal Oak. I have to tell you, six years ago, I moved, seven years ago, I moved my business here. Five years ago, I moved here personally, and it's the best decision, or one of the best decisions I've made in my life, and I love it here. I consider it my home, and its success and happiness of all the residents are important to me. I'm downtown a lot, I'm around a lot, and so this stuff is, this is good stuff. So I'm here in several capacities to give my overwhelming support of the proposed skating rink in the downtown park area. First of all, as a resident, I'm always looking for things to do in the wintertime. We have a lot of stuff in the summer, a little less in the winter. Outdoor sports are great, a beautiful January, February day in Michigan is terrific, and I think that, I mean, I enjoyed the rink, I was there regularly, I saw a lot of residents there. The other thing is the skate rentals were very robust, which means to me that there are a lot of people skating for the first time, or don't own their own skates, or don't get many opportunities to try new things like that, and we provided that. It was absolutely fantastic during Winter Blast and afterwards. Speaking of being a fan, you know, the view there at the farmer's market with the thing on a pedestal was okay, but obviously, parents watching their kids skate and people watching family members or friends skate, an eye-level view is much more conducive to the overall experience. And so I'd love to see it in the park as opposed to at the farmer's market. While I'm not doing this as a business owner because I think it'll help my business, I want to say that I'm not just here as a spectator or a fan, but I'm a supporter. So I have $25,000 committed to this ice rink. I did it last year, I have $25,000 committed this year. I understand there's some challenges and maybe some more expenses, so I'm here to tell you I'm going to up my commitment from $25,000 to $40,000 because I really want this ice rink. I think it's a great thing. I look into some of the parks, I live on Fourth Street, I look at the park across the street, and it's got those berms shaped in an ice rink. Three years ago, I tried to get the fire department to fill them, or the recreation department to fill them, so we could go out and ice skate during COVID. We don't have anything to do like that in the wintertime. It will be a good thing, there'll be a lot more people coming into the town on Saturday in the afternoon, Sundays in the afternoons, or maybe on the evenings. My company does a lot of business with the Royal Oak schools. My plan is to sponsor a skating night for every building in the Royal Oak schools that M3 Investment Services will sponsor. Lastly, John Witts usually does a great job, he always does a great job, so I'm supportive of their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pesendorfer. Thank you. All right. Who wants to follow that one? We'll go with Mr. Ashley.
Good evening. It looks like September 21st will be our open house to see the new Royal Oak Manor. I will keep you updated. I noticed that the Main Street paving is almost done, but I have a lot of complaints. One, the islands will not do what they were promised. They were promised to slow traffic, since there were supposed to be one lane each way, it was told to be just like 13, like Main Street, between 13 and 14. It is not. They're even going faster with the new pavement. Also, the islands in four to five feet short of the marked-out sidewalks, which means they do no good for people crossing the street. I thought the islands were supposed to be a safety zone. There is no safety zone. Those islands are useless in the sense where pedestrians are walking, the islands are either here or here, and they're not, they're supposed to be in the crosswalks where people are safe from getting hit. And my, and with the traffic, and it's not slowing down, there's still two lanes. Also, they've got a new apartments going up across from the fire station on Sixth and Williams. That's a minimum of 100 people going to be extra in that area trying to cross Main Street at Sixth or at Seventh Street. Those islands are useless. I know that I was hit twice many, about a year and a half ago by cars going, I was told that these islands would protect us. It looks like those islands weren't. So my question I have is, did the designers not listen to the people? Did the designers do something completely different? Where was the city overseeing this project? Because if those islands were meant to slow down traffic, they're not. If they were supposed to protect our residents crossing the streets and for like arts, beats, and eats, or something like that, they will not. They're short of the walk. So somewhere, somehow, the city fall, fell down. So all I want to know is why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, yes, in the back.
Good evening. My name is Dan Fish, and I'm here for you guys tonight as representing our business, Nautical Bowls. My wife and I just opened up at the end of June, which is a new eatery at Woodward Corners, featuring tasty and healthy meals. Our bowls feature superfoods that are gluten-free, dairy-free, plant-based, and we think will bring a lot to this year's Arts Beats and Eats Festival, which is why I'm here tonight. As a new business in Royal Oak, we are trying to get the word out, and we feel that pursuing arts, beats, and eats would really be great for us personally, but also great for the festival. And right now, we're at a threshold where we need to purchase an additional $5,000 of equipment, and that's no small task, given that we've invested pretty much our life savings into the business already. The opportunity for getting a discount from the American Rescue Plan Act funding would be a huge help for us as we look to actually introduce our business to the widespread Royal Oak community, rather than just the Woodward Corners market that people are familiar with at this time. And we were notified that we would receive a share of funding as we've applied to participate in the festival, so that's why I'm here this evening speaking in support. We may not have the standing history of troubles that other restaurants went through during the pandemic, being that we just opened up, but we are brand new, and we are faced with a lot of financial challenges, as all of us are. And we're hoping that the request for approval of the ARPA funding proposal will help us get the best shot we can at making our presence here long-term in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Silvery. I'm the managing partner at O'Toole's, and I'm here to read a statement from Carrie O'Neil. She's the co-owner of Rock on Third and the president of the Royal Oak Restaurant Association. She could not be here tonight, but she asked me to read this for her. "We have polled many members of the association, and we are overwhelmingly in support of the proposed skating rink. Let me start with the obvious reasons. First, the impact of added tourism and visits to the park are going to be insignificant. One only needs to see how the Winter Blast Festival performed last year to see the impact, and that wasn't even a prime skating season. Let's look at the Campus Marshes Park in Detroit and their skating, which annually starts in November, as a clear example of foot traffic with positive outcomes. Imagine the number of folks that will join the restaurants and establishments like Lockhart's, Freshies, Ale Mary's, Royal Oak Brewery, and Astoria Begrave, and others as part of an afternoon or evening skate in the park. And yes, this is a case where something positive like this will be profound impact on specific businesses such as the Rock on Third. And we are certainly, and we've certainly had our struggles in the last couple of years. There is no reason, there is no reason not to think that the impact on retail will also be significant. Second, while there's, it is not my purpose in sharing my thoughts this evening, there can also be no question on how cool an attraction this would be for local residents for quality of life with families, couples, and skating fans. Finally, what better way to activate our downtown park space? It's a cool space, but in the winter, there's no, there's no way that the park will have the traffic and the popularity as it does in the summer. A skating feature will certainly make the park shine throughout the winter. I think that city leadership has to think of the reasons why this can work, not why it can't work. And speaking for reasons why it can, I look at John Witts team and what he did with the skating for a short time at the farmer's market this past winter. They're a capable group and should be trusted to lead this production. Thank you so much for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Sorry, I wanted to go before Luigi. He probably speaks a lot better than I do. Dear members of the Royal Oak Commission, my name is Greg Rayner, owner of Cafe Muse at 418 South Washington. Being in downtown Royal Oak has been a challenge of late, and being a restaurant in general has been incredibly challenging over the last couple of years. In this light, I'm here to ask that you approve the ARPA funding for Arts Beats and Eats. Part of this funding goes directly to at least eight participating Royal Oak restaurants, and we're actually one of them. We received this funding last year and were able to actually participate in the festival. Arts Beats and Eats has always given us a discount compared to other restaurants from outside the city, and their proposed use of ARPA funding, which was deemed acceptable last year, is sound policy. I've shared private concerns with many of you on the commission relating to our struggles, and in this case, I want to make a public statement that some relief on our already discounted rental is something that I am asking for and need. If you approve of this funding, I want to give you a taste of what we'll be doing. We'll bring back our world-famous grilled cheese. I'm also working with a friend of mine who's Mexican to feature her tacos. I know ARPA funding won't be in place forever, but I'm looking at the present and can't afford the space without your support, and the revenue from the space will give us a big lift and a chance for exposure in a very competitive restaurant climate. Finally, the other use of the funding, especially support of downtown dollar program for retail, is the kind of city-commission, DDA partnership and collaboration that we need to promote shopping in downtown Royal Oak. The retail sector, as you all know, is probably challenged even more than the restaurant industry right now. Thank you for considering the support of this proposal. It makes sense, and we still need relief. And actually, I have a minute, and just wanted to add, skate rink, yes. Good thing. Parking, not so much so. Skate rink, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Yes, in the back, Richard.
Good evening, guys. My name is Ethan Friedman, and I'm representing MI Nutrition in downtown Royal Oak. We love events like Arts Beats and Eats and Winter Blast, and they've done a great job at bringing new and fresh faces to the downtown area, and in addition to that, to retail establishments down there. As some of you guys may be aware, the retail climate in the world is not great right now. That is why we are very grateful that the DDA has allocated the downtown dollars. That has definitely given us and, like, businesses a nice boost during these times. While we aren't one of the top recipients of the money spent, we still love the program, and having staff at the entrances of the festivals further explaining how to use the dollars to the patrons and where to use them would be beneficial to not just us, but a lot of other businesses down there. So I'm here tonight to applaud the DDA for allocating dollars and asking that the Royal Oak Commission continue the collaboration by approving the request for ARPA funding, which will cover the cost of the ambassadors and the staff to promote our store and others to the patrons of the festivals. Also, skating rink, as a lifetime hockey player, I think that is just a great addition for the community, and we are all for it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Candace Lilly. I am here on behalf of Mr. Omar Mitchell, who couldn't make it today from Imaginave Restaurant located here in Royal Oak on Lafayette and Fourth Street. We have just now actually been open for a full year now. Our first time ever participating in the Arts Beats and Eats program was actually last year, and it was wonderful. We got a lot of great feedback and everything, and it was just wonderful working with Mr. John as well. We are also asking for that, you know, you continue on with the ARPA as well, because it did help us out. We are a black-owned restaurant, and we are small business, and we're struggling. Staffing issues, high-priced food, and other vendors can actually tell you prices have risen dramatically, and with the funding that they were giving, I believe it will help us and everyone else again as well. And also, I am a firm believer that you should go ahead and go with the ice skating rink. I live in Farmington Hills, and downtown Farmington, we have the ice skating rink as well, and it is phenomenal. We see the kids there, they're having fun, they're on the snow slopes from time to time as well. And also, I used to work downtown Detroit, so I'm very familiar with the ice skating rink down there. We have also participated in the Winter Blast there. Phenomenal. Money-making, family-oriented, it's just amazing, so I'm all for that as well. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. I think I see a hand in the back. Yeah, way in the back row. Nosebleed seats.
Hi, my name is Sean. I live on Maplewood Ave with my partner. We just moved here in February, and we really enjoy living in Royal Oak. I just have two things to bring up to the commission today. It's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to state that. One, we live near 12 Mile and Woodward, so we live near Woodward. Woodward is four lanes in either direction, so that's eight lanes across. I-94 is only three lanes in either direction, so Woodward is a lot larger than a freeway. As somebody who would like to be able to visit some of the businesses in the area and spend my money at those businesses, I can't because I have to cross the highway to get there. So I would like Royal Oak to consider joining Ferndale and putting Woodward on a road diet. I understand it is owned by M.DOT. I understand there are some issues with that, but I do think if Ferndale is doing that, there's probably something that we can look at as well. Two, just a general note about housing. I'm a younger, like, first-time home buyer. I got extremely lucky. Most people my age can't afford a house, let alone a house in Royal Oak. I would like Royal Oak to consider doing more to allow more housing, especially housing opportunities for people who, you know, we have a lot of nice homes here, but it would be nice if we had some more affordable homes so that people my age could live here. I did have two notes about that. And first, a shout-out to the Citizens Academy, I really liked that, that was great. I did learn that through that. The commission had a plan for having a set amount of office or commercial space downtown, and that was implemented. I appreciated that presentation. But I was thinking maybe the commission could do something similar with housing, setting a goal for amount of housing units created in the city, and maybe having city staff, or I know we have an economic development, maybe having somebody focus on housing development as well, or trying to bring in smaller housing developers. Other than that, again, a shout-out to the Citizens Academy and the Sustainability Academy. I really appreciated those opportunities to learn more about the city. Please continue to do that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that Ms. Wagnon?
Janice Wagnon. "Despite at a previous commission meeting being accused of yammering and told to just stop it because you will fix it, I'm going to make some comments about the structural deficit as it relates to the millages. Instead of you cutting discretionary spending and instituting a hiring freeze, apparently one way you plan to fix it is threatening to cut out, cut out or eliminate funding for parks, seniors, and the annual shelter unless we pay more taxes. This without regard to the taxpayers who are experiencing huge inflationary increases, job layoffs, and more than likely, an impending recession, and as a result, cutting back on our spending. How should you inform the voters?" The item on the agenda tonight about the two millage proposals. "As Commissioner Collo stated, the new millages are comparable to what the General Fund is now paying. Unlike the safety millage that passed during a flourishing economy, showing a plan is not a guarantee of how the funds will be spent, or if the General Fund will even be able to afford to supplement any of these items, given the uncertainty of today's economy. The only guarantee is, starting December 1st, if this, if they pass, we will pay more in taxes. Further, the city manager stated, and this is for the people at home, unless, if they missed it, quote, 'This is probably similar to the road millage. If you delay it by a year, it will be fine.'" All of these facts are what you should be told, should be told to the citizens and the voters. Regarding the ice rink proposal, although it's nice, and I agree with a lot of what the people said, I encourage you to vote no and follow the recommendations of the staff for the following reasons. In my many observations of going by, I didn't think it was well-attended at all, except during the Winter Blast, and I live relatively close and go by often. According to the proposal, the city is at risk for losing substantial funds. I know that Mr. Witts lost money at the beginning of the year on it. If it is at Centennial Commons, it sounds like there's going to be damage and downtime to make the repairs. If it's at the market, these are things to consider. There could be possible negative impacts on the vendors, as well as future rentals, whose contracts normally include the use of the West parking lot. Do we know if reservations have already been made, with the understanding that that lot is included during that time period? If the building has to remain open, who pays for the additional staffing, heating, lighting, cleaning costs, et cetera? And seriously, if you're looking for a Campus Marshes vibe, the cement parking lot doesn't compare. Let the promoter fulfill the terms of his signed contract, pay for and provide the rink, monitor the attendance during the extended period after Winter Blast, and make an informed decision next year on whether the taxpayers should take that monetary risk and spend more from the General Fund, especially considering you're asking us to fix the structural deficit by paying more taxes. This is a downtown event and should be supported by the DDA, not the taxpayers of Royal Oak."
All right, who's next? Mr. Charle?
Yeah?
Yeah? The one, the only.
Good evening. By the way, if you see my pants wet, is I was sitting in a plane on establishment in Royal Oak, so I sat, I sit down in a West seat, so don't get a bad idea. My pants are all wet.
Now everyone is.
Yeah, I'm here for the Art Beats and Eats funds. I think, what to say about Art Beats and Eats? It's been a winner since day one. I mean, Art Beats and Eats is... I mean, Arts Beats and Eats is, is the best event we have in Royal Oak, I mean, by far. Okay? So, and we, as you know, there's a lot of restaurants in Royal Oak, like 30 of us. And unfortunately, the last two years, they've been real rough. Okay? So, we would love to participate. Unfortunately, like I said, in the last two years, it's been tough. So I'm asking you to approve the proposal for John, Mr. Witt's Arts Beats and Eats. Also, the part, the idea about the ice skating rink, I think is great. Finally, we have a beautiful park in Royal Oak, in the heart of Royal Oak. But it's only beautiful in the summertime. Let's make it beautiful in the wintertime, too, by having something like an ice skating rink. Thank you.
Thank you, Luigi. And I'm not looking at your pants right now. All right, anybody else for public comment tonight? All right, a way to close public comment. All right, going once, going twice. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back up to this side of the table, which brings us to Item 7, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening? I'm looking around. Nobody wishes to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay. All right, the consent agenda now consists of city commission meetings from July 11th, claims from the 15th, and July 15th special pay, and special pay on the 26th, approval of purchase orders, Police Department 2021 annual awards, adoption of City of Royal Oak Support Emergency Operations Plan, First Amendment to Grand Esmond Metropolitan Lofts condominium, Association Stormwater Retention, Order of Professional Engineering Services, 2023 Rochester Road Improvement, Approval of License Agreement of Bar Louis Street Patio, Approval of License Agreement Toms Ale Mary's Mesa Street Patio, Ordinance Establishing Human Rights Commission Second Reading, Approval to Release Oakland County 22 Winter Blast Sponsorship Funds, Approval of the Tentative Extension Agreement with Professional and Technical Employees Association and Service Employees International Union, Approval of Wide Open West Michigan LLC, Request to Renew Uniform Video Legal Local Franchise Agreement, and Receive and File the Non-Auction Items, which is the June 2022 investment report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read? We have a motion by Commissioner Dubak, support by Commissioner Collo. Okay, Commissioner Dubak.
Thank you, Mary. Just want to recognize the second reading of the Establishment of Human Rights Ordinance is a part of this consent agenda, and just want to once again extend our thanks to the task force and everyone that put so much work into making this happen, and staff who have helped shepherd it through the process and get it to this point. So really excited to see this come to fruition and start getting it active and see, you know, what great things it can produce for our city. So thank you all for all your support and work on this.
Anybody else? Yeah, what Commissioner Dubak said. A lot of hard work, but a lot of hard work ahead of us. So a big step for our community, paving the way for many more big steps. So grateful for everyone and all their help and efforts. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. We got the commission meeting minutes passed. And the Human Rights Ordinance. All right, so that's what, 10 days or 14 days? I think it's 10 days per.
10 days.
10 days, okay. By timelines, there's always different timelines that I have to remember. So 10 days from this moment, the ordinance will be in effect. Very good. Wonderful. All right, that brings us to Item 8, which is the Approval of the Appointments Committee Recommendations. I know the Appointments Committee met. I'm not sure who chaired. Mr. Hunt?
I will take it. Commissioner Perus did chair. She's not here today, so. Two weeks ago, the Appointments Committee met to review applications for a number of openings on city committees and boards. There were a lot of great applications. It was great to see so many people interested in being a part of our community, taking part, making change, being there to see change happen. But we had to narrow it down to 1 to 2 for the vacancies that were available. So I don't know if you want me to read through all of these, but we did take time to appoint, I believe there were 11 individuals to certain committees and boards. So we would request that you approve the requested vacancies.
Any questions? Just have one. This Steve Taichow, Taikal.
That was a different one.
For the Veterans Events Committee. Can you do a background check on that guy? Just kidding. Sorry, Steve, if you're watching. Probably not. You're enjoying life now that you're retired. Okay, no questions? All right, is there a motion to accept these nominations? Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, let's now, oh, sorry, Commissioner Collo.
I just want to add, you know, once again, thank you to all these people who are willing to give up their nights, their weekends, time with their families, dates, anything fun sometimes, to help the city out. These are really important boards and committees. So the real work of the city is really done by all these volunteers. So it's, we really appreciate all this work.
And in today's climate, it's not an easy task. You know, everybody's target, not just us. And for people to step up and, you know, do the job and, you know, everything that it comes with, it takes special people, and we're so grateful for them. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to Item 9, which is the Approval of the Proposed Revisions to Site Plan Planned Unit Development, Rezoning of 230 East Harrison, First Reading. Mr. Twain, how are you doing this evening, sir?
I represent the commission. This, this item has been before you on two prior occasions. The original was back in February. In that interim, a new developer took over, you may recall, and they brought a revised proposal for your consideration. I believe that was at your June meeting, June 13th meeting. And then the commission asked for some reconsideration or some other items be added to it. The petitioner has done that and knows those items are listed in the commission letter. Some of them, I'll just highlight, are they revised the balconies that were along the north side and extended out over in the right-of-way. They did redesign the HVC number of units on the rooftop so that the green roof could be expanded to some 2,800 square feet. They did add Energy Star appliances to all the dwelling units. They increased the number of electrical charging stations from what was originally eight, and they reduced it to three, but it's back up to actually 23 at the present time. So a significant increase. They've added a public bike repair station and bile swale along Delaware Avenue, and they are offering to make a donation to the Arts Commission. Those are the revisions from the plan that you saw last time. Very briefly, you may recall that it was a 32-unit residential project with the parking on the ground floor, with somewhere in the neighborhood of 53 feet height. Obviously, the height of the roof and parapets varied based on the location. But that's in a nutshell. The one item that's kind of left from staff standpoint and direction from the commission is in regards, you also required and the planning commission recommended that at least two of the units be affordable units. What I'm looking for from the commission tonight is direction on what the commission considers affordable in terms of either income or rent per month or some factor. And so we've left that blank at this point in the resolution. We did attach what HUD uses when we are dealing with the federal programs in the metro area, and you'll see those attached as Attachment 2 at the end of the staff report. That's the one item that we're looking for direction on.
Questions for Mr. Twain? Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Twain, I guess my first question is about this HUD document that you presented to us. How would that change every year? I assume that this is a document that's updated based on statistics, correct? I mean, so how would this change? Would this, if we adopt this standard, let's say, one or two-bedroom standard, would this change every year what they're allowed to charge and run?
It depends on what you, what portion of you adopt. One was the fair market rent, which change yearly. In the document or the development agreement, what we would look at is if they changed it, the development agreement would simply reference those, and so it could adjust based on what those are determined every year.
Okay. And then if we go the other direction, how would that work, then?
If we go what?
If we go with the, yeah, the percent.
Well, the first attachment was simply like 80% of the median family income. Family income's listed at about $89,900 for the Detroit metro area, which Oakland County and Royal Oak are in. You can, you can adopt 80% of that as terms of an income, or you can go down from that.
You know, I guess my question is, this document's updated every year, though, right? So we would reference this yearly to see what the, it's dynamic. This is not a number that's set in stone. It's, it will always be 80% of whatever that number is.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't.
Oh, that's, clear as mud. I got you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Macy?
Okay, so I thought the question you were just now asking was about, maybe I'm now reading this wrong because what you just said about there's the fair market rent per, as established, and that's in the language here, that that would be just by that standard, which of course is updated, and so that works. But it says, "And the total monthly rent for such dwellings shall not exceed X percent of each household's annual income." And I thought that's what you were asking about because there's two places that percent are listed in this. One is they have to earn no more than the overall percent of the median family income. That's eligible to be, to get in. And then there's, the rent cannot exceed X percent of the household's annual income. So I thought what your question was, was how does that work? But maybe I.
No, that's also a good question.
Okay, so I thought you were trying to compare those. But now that I'm going through it, I'm wondering if I'm reading it wrong to begin with, and you aren't suggesting that it's an either-or. Either we do the fair market rate, or we do the percent. You're saying it shall not exceed X percent or the fair market rate, like those are both the caps.
That's, that's an option for the commission. We've written it in there, so it wasn't missed. You could simply cap it. And the other, the other way to go about the rent part is if you use the 80% under the HUD regulations, that it wouldn't, the rent wouldn't exceed, say, 33% of the family income or 29%. You wouldn't worry about what the rent would. It would be based on what that income was. So there's a lot of ways, I guess, to go at this, and that's why we were asking where your interest was. Since this isn't an ordinance provision, we have nothing to push back at here to say, do it in this fashion.
So just a clarification on that. If, we're saying, just to use whole numbers here, erroneous numbers, but just to do the math. We're saying that the median family household income is 1,000. And let's say in the first underscore, the first blank there, we put in, let's say, 80%. That would be not earning, dwellings and households earning not more than 80% of the median household income, so that would be 800. And then that would be, if you did 25%, not shall not exceed 25%, then that would be 2,000 in that case. Because you're basing that number, that second percent, off the adjusted median income above, the way that reads, right?
Well, the first number of you are going to use HUD on Attachment 2. I wish I could get to page 2, but is the median family income under this chart was 89,900. If you picked in the first blank and said it could be 80% of that, then depending on the family size or bedrooms, that would be your income limit. And then if you wanted to do it as a percent of that, then that would just math out the rent level.
Right, because, I mean, if the person's income was, I mean, I'm making up a number, $10,000 a year, and then you, I mean, that's, you know, just a little unreasonable for habitation to go down.
What you're basically setting is the max person that would be eligible.
Yeah, to rent the place.
And then anybody under that, obviously, is eligible with their rent, so.
A lot of smart people up here. Love to hear their opinions. Well, we also have, I mean, I don't see any other hands. We do have the petitioner here tonight. Maybe we hear from them for a little bit and kind of go over all the changes and new information you may have. Mr. Krieger?
Good evening. It's great to see everybody again. A few new faces. It's been a while since I've been in front of you guys. Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects, 2020 East 11 Mile. Thanks for having us here tonight. Lawrence Miles in the audience, he's the owner. And, you know, Tim did a great job discussing some of the changes that we made, and I'm happy to elaborate if anybody wants me to. But in a nutshell, we revised the HVAC equipment in order to make it more energy-efficient. That allowed us to get rid of some rooftop units. We turned them into heat pumps, so we were able to put them inside the building. That gave us more, you know, over-doubled the green roof space. We went to an all-electric building, and we're using all Energy Star appliances, LED, you name it. So it's going to be a very efficient building. Added EV charging stations. Proposing a donation to the Commission for the Arts. Added a bike repair station, and then we added a bile swale out in front of the project. So we feel like we addressed the comments that were brought up at the last city commission meeting, and we're happy to respond to any of that. To touch on the, I think it's called FM, or MFI in the write-up. I'm used to AMI. It's a little bit out of my lane. I'm an architect, not a developer, but I've been around enough to at least speak to it. So basically, the way that we understand it is that, let's take a single person, okay? Single individual. Our goal here, the developer's goal, is to provide workforce housing or housing for veterans. So you're looking at somebody who's making between like $30,000, $40,000 a year. When you look at the chart as a single person, you're going to fall at the 80% MFI level, okay? Which means they can only rent to that type of, in that price range, or it can be higher, but then it doesn't qualify. So they have to rent between $30,000 and $50,000 a year to that individual. Then, per the write-up, which actually is pretty fair and used to seeing, you'd then say X percent of their gross revenue for the year, their income for the year, can go towards rent. So if you had, let's say, $30,000 is what they make, and then you take 30% of it, just for round math, I think that's $9,000, and then you divide that by 12, it's like $750 or $800 at one. That's how that works. So our hope is that we could be at the 80% MFI because it falls right in the range that we're looking at. And then we would propose, say, 33% of their gross revenue for the year is to fill these blanks, that, if that's what the commission wants. So that'd be our hope, if that makes sense.
Questions? Mr. Dubak.
So I'm not sure if these came from our department or if these are numbers that you brought to us, but median family income at $90,000, that's for our region, Oakland, Way, Macomb?
I think this, this actually came from staff, so we were following this. But I think this is for our region. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah.
And that's from HUD? Because I'm showing $81,000 for Oakland County and $64,000 for Macomb and just under $50,000 for Wayne as median household income. So I'm just curious if we're, are we pulling, 90 seems high for our Oakland, Way, Macomb region.
This is the Detroit metro area that we stuck on there. It's Detroit, Warren, Livonia. We're in that area, but obviously, the county has one, too, and that's going to be higher.
Got you. Yeah, that seems, I mean, 90 seems high for median household income. So I'm curious, I'm curious about if we do this tonight, will we be picking this specific number or will we identify a data source where we want to pull this from? Or this is the official data source where one would build this kind of policy?
But again, these, yes, these two were samples that we could use Oakland County's, and whether or not you wanted the median family income as a start point for Oakland County.
Sure.
That would be fine.
Well, I mean, I'm actually kind of more interested in the region. We know there's a shortage across the region, and a lot of our workers come from, from Macomb and Wayne, and that's kind of what we're trying to go for.
You will, you will see in the resolution that we use the region. So we did define the region in the resolution, which is the chart that's attached. What we did insert was the percent.
I think that's what you're looking for, Mr. Dubak. I think that's what you're looking for, Mr. Dubac, is Detroit, Warren, Livonia for HUD metro area. I think the key is to establish these percentages, right? So is it 80% AMI, or actually it's called MFI here, and then the percent of the income a year. So it's those two things. And then I just identify a source, like you mentioned.
Sure.
Which could be this, or whatever other means there are out there. So it will fluctuate, per what Mr. Cola said, based on, you know, the world and how it changes.
Okay. I think it's a, I think no more than a third of one's income. That's, that's pretty much best practice in affordable housing.
That's what I've seen as a standard, to be honest. You know, 30, 33%. That's, that's the range that I've seen.
Yeah. So I'm comfortable with putting 30% in there, and then I would be comfortable with 75% of median household income. But I want to, I definitely want to get clear on where we're pulling that data from.
Sure.
90 seems, it seems high for our region, for median household income. But that's, that's where my head's at.
Commissioner Cola?
Thank you. And Commissioner Dubac kind of covered all my questions about MFI and percentage. I want to go to some of these features in the building that you guys have added since our last meeting. You know, first of all, thank you, because we did have a long discussion here, and, you know, talked about a lot of possible options. Can you talk about the sustainability impact of eliminating gas? I know some large municipalities, like I believe it's New York, no longer allow gas to be used, natural gas to be used in their dwellings.
To be honest, I think it's really just as simple as eliminating the use of natural resources. So then you go into electric, and with electric, you can control things easier, you know, with different energy efficiencies in the fixtures, the way you design the building. So that's what we're doing. And the heat pump system that we're proposing is very, very energy efficient. That's getting outside of my pay grade, for sure. But our engineer recommended it. It's, it's a little bit more of a hit to the developer upfront, but long-term, it's going to be more energy efficient.
Okay. And then on the roof, you've expanded the green space, correct?
That's correct.
How, how much did you expand it by?
We over doubled it, so we're up to 2,800, I think, now. Initially, we were at 1209, and now we're at 2,833.
Okay.
And then there's actually, I just think that maybe they messed up, but there's about 500 square feet of green space along the parapet, right at the outdoor patio. I just think that our, you can see it, actually, oh, great, thanks, Tim has it up, the clouded area and the cloud, and then the area just beneath it. That's what the 2,833 is. There's green space, it's right along the patio that wasn't counted, for whatever reason. So we actually have a little more in there, probably about 3,000 square feet.
Okay. And then a couple more questions. So I know one thing I had to ask for was for the EV, for the charging. So these 120, 20 amp outlets will still charge a car overnight, correct? So someone who's coming in, trying to plug, I seen this around, I've seen it at the galley here, and he has a beautiful mustang out front that I would love to have myself, but you can plug it in and go to sleep. And in the morning, you have a reasonable amount of charge to get to work the next day, right?
I believe so. Yeah, I don't know too much about that. I mean, I should, but, you know, I'm an engineer. You know, work that out. So to be honest, that's, that's what they came up with.
And then the last question I do have is, I noticed that you're making a generous donation to the Commission for the Arts, but your letter also indicates you're paying art on site, correct?
So, is that, is that?
I did.
I know I have my name on it, but I didn't write it. Everything that comes out of our office has my name on it.
Usually what gets you in trouble in life. Um, let's see, it is...
Oh, the description of the...
We also propose to commission a local artist to produce an art piece to be displayed on the subject property.
Um, I think so.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so those all seem like great community benefits, so thank you.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anybody else? Any other questions? Commissioner Hunt?
I just have one question. But first, thank you for listening to the concerns that we had at our last meeting and implementing the suggestions that we had. It may be a question for the owner, but we're talking about the rates for the affordable housing or the affordable units. What are the regular rates for, do you know at this point? Just to make certain that those affordable rates aren't bumping right up against.
Sure. Rates for market value, or rates for?
Have there been any determination or evaluation for these particular units? It may be premature.
Not for this, unless you have a pro forma, Lawrence?
No. It's really going to be based on the time that this actually comes live. Rental rates have moderately increased, but not as much as in the past few years, but really they'll just be comparable to other rentals in this surrounding area, once this actually comes live and is available for rentals. We haven't actually, don't have any figures on those today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, but, but back to that, then, what you would do is, you know, if there was a multiplier applied, then that would, you know, you're kind of limiting where the rent could go. That's the whole point.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay, my question is for Commissioner Dubac. What was the chart you were looking at? So I just, I just went to the HUD website to try to figure it out. And when I pulled Oakland County, I got the same chart that's in our attachment. So we're...
I'm looking, so I'm looking at census data. So I'm curious HUD is polling, where HUD is polling from, because I'm looking at, yeah, Warren, Livonia, Detroit, and then that's landing at a $90,000 median household income, which just, that doesn't track with census data. So I'm not, I'm not sure where those samples are coming from, or what exactly that is.
So you don't have a separate chart? You're just, you're just seeing the number and thinking that's can't be right?
It, it feels high, and it's definitely high if you consider census data.
Okay.
So I'm just not sure exactly what, I mean, obviously HUD has a methodology, but I'm not, I'm curious exactly what they're supposed to, what we're supposed to use that number to inform. Because then they're also setting levels at low, very low, extremely low, right, and not percentages? So I'm wondering if we're using that data, should we be using one of those designations and not a percentage of the median?
And that's the other thing I was going to ask you, is because you said you kind of threw out 75% as a number, and this chart, you know, doesn't show that exactly. So I mean, I know we can just do the math on it, but if we're using the chart, it certainly would be easier to have the plug into that. So I just wondered if the 75 to 80 you felt was meaningful, or?
I think that, you know, they're proposing 80. I want to cut a little bit, like, I want to achieve our goal, which is, sorry.
Sorry.
Of having, you know, quality, you know, affordable, you know, units that folks who are working in Royal Oak can afford to live.
Thank you for your answers, Commissioner. That's all.
Mr. Krieger?
Sorry to jump back off. What I propose is, Lawrence?
You know, the chart's here, it's something we can point at. It has 30, 50, 80. Maybe we keep that, and maybe instead of 33, close to 30 or 28%. You know, I mean, in order to satisfy, Mr. Dubac, that's, I'm trying to figure it. Because then we can go, because I don't, I don't see 75, so I don't know how to get to that. At least we can leave this, go, okay, we got this, and then it's going to be a percentage off of that. You know what I mean? Because that one's more flexible.
Yeah, and I don't think, when you talk about people's income and poverty over the years, it doesn't necessarily correlate, you know what I mean? 20,000, you know, the gaps between 20,000 and 50,000 can mean very two different things in two different periods. You know what I mean? Depending on what people are spending money on, and how that deflation is actually affecting people of, you know, real or lower incomes versus moderate. So that's probably why they don't necessarily have like a sliding scale, or their scale isn't based on percentages, it's based on data. It's not a bad suggestion. Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Mr. Renna. I think this is for Mr. Tring here. You know, so we kind of talked about this early on, but this data is going to change every year. So would the Community Development Department every year publish what these rates would be? Because I presume, we're starting here now, I hope to see this moving forward in other developments we have going on. In fact, we've talked about one for another involvement downtown, you know, downtown. So if we're doing this, will your department publish the rate every year? And then a follow-up to that, when you have a rental, you know, every year, we have a rental application, you know, they'll have to file a license. Will the, the owner have to indicate what they leased it for last year, so that we know that they're, in fact, sticking to these rates?
Well, the rate we will have, when you say published, I don't know that we put them out any different than they're accessed on the website and those things. They're available. So I'm not sure what you mean by publish them. But yes, they will be available for people to review. If you use these, these are available on various websites, whether it's Semcog's, ours, or others. Because it is the Detroit metro region that HUD uses. As those change, we'll update those. In terms of dealing with the developer, I guess that's an enforcement issue that we would have to track in some fashion of those two units, and how, how and who they're being rented to.
And I'm not thinking of just this developer, I'm thinking just as a whole. This is, you know, if we're implementing this, how, how are we going to track this, not just for this one person, but this is the first of...
Well, if you get another PUD project that comes through, that you want to implement this too, if you have a, if you, if you've done it to this one in this fashion?
Yeah.
Staff would probably tell the next person, you're going to get, have to deal with it in this way. We wouldn't have a blank. We would have following common policy that you've set.
Yeah. I guess I'm just looking to make sure that we are tracking this after tonight, that, you know, come, you know, two years when the building's up and there's people living it, that your, your department has a way to make sure that we are in fact achieving these goals.
Well, we will have the development agreement in place. I'm not sure how we're going to annually go out and track it, other than maybe through the rental licensing program?
Yeah.
And see whether these units are, who they're rented to, and deal with them that way.
So you think you can make some amendments to that, the rental licensing agreements, to incorporate that type of information?
Yeah. The, the backside of it, though, is I'm not sure how I'm going to enforce it, what my enforcement mechanism is. If they're violating it, am I kicking people out? Am I, that's, that's the back, tracking it isn't the problem. It's, what do I do with it if I find a violation? The building's up, the units are rented, what's my penalty phase?
Well, luckily we have good operator service, so that won't be an issue. But that is something to consider, you know, in the future. You know, that's, I think, some long-term planning we have to do on our end.
And I can talk with Mr. Liao about maybe what we put in the development agreement, once we know the process, but in terms of fines, maybe, or something. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Tring.
Commissioner Macy?
So I'm wondering if tracking it in fact would be a problem. It seems like there's a privacy issue involved with asking people like, hey, who are your lowest renter? Who are the people you're giving these housing to? We need to see their income and make sure you're following this. And as you say, we have no ordinance in place that's tracking this. So I, I sort of wonder if that would be, I, I mean, is it normal to approach an apartment complex and say, hey, we need to know the income of the people who are staying here? I don't think we can do that, can we?
Well, the only, the only one I'll, I'll put it towards is this is not a normal rental project. You are, you are providing assistance in increasing the number of units. You are giving assistance in decreasing the, the cost for parking. You are entering into an agreement under the PUD to act in a certain fashion. So they're entering into an agreement. This is not a normal apartment building.
Okay, but I'm a renter. I'm, I'm in an apartment building, and I'm not giving them permission to disclose my income, I guess is my point.
Yeah.
Sorry, interrupt. If I may make one comment, just a suggestion. We have, we have no issue sharing our rental rule. It's just an idea with whatever department is appropriate on an annual basis.
Yeah. I mean, maybe the idea is that the two units that you've identified as attainable, every year, every time you sign a lease, you send a notification to City Hall that these are the two units, and we have the, add our option to audit and send a letter out to those addresses saying, hey, this, these two units qualify as a attainable housing. This is the amount, you know, the calculation that you should be paying for rent. And if you aren't paying that, then come back and inform us, and then, you know, we'll figure out what the, you know, we'll repossess the building if you, no, I'm just kidding.
We have no, we have no issue doing that. That worked well with us.
Okay. Perfect. Does that sound good?
I like it.
All right. So, oh, Commissioner Dubac.
Thank you, man. I really appreciate your efforts in addressing the concerns we've brought forward. I feel like I'm still a little unclear on the calculation, but I do want to move forward with this. I'm wondering if there's comfort in, you know, approving this development with the caveat, the staff will bring us back, you know, kind of filling in those blanks based on our conversation tonight. Y'all are comfortable with that? Because I definitely like the effort that's been put in here. But I think somewhere in that, you know, 70, 80% range of median household income, and no more than a third. But, you know, let's have, can we just bring back a slightly more detailed discussion, because I want to be way off on that.
For a second reading.
What?
What's that?
For a second reading.
Oh.
Yeah.
That seems like a minor thing for second reading. Do you agree, Mr. Tring?
I guess, say that again, I'm not following the...
So I want to, you know, approve, you know, as the proposal on first reading, but have you bring back kind of detailed proposal for a little more detail on the, the low-income unit proposal for, for final reading?
Okay. Are we using the Detroit Wayne, Detroit Wood, Detroit Warren metro region?
I guess that's kind of what I would...
Are we using 80% of that?
Oh, well, that's what I would like to, in the interim, take a look, what is the best practice in the region.
And then from there, the rent one is, is, you know, is it 25% of their income? Is, is that the rent number?
Well, I think we're discussing 30% of overall income at, you know, if 80% is the right target number, I know that's like, well, how does, you know, calling low income for, for CDBG purposes? I think it's just that median, I'm just curious, I just want a little more clarification on median income number and where that's coming from. It just, it seems high, I mean.
I feel, I feel comfortable with the 80 and 30 or 33. But I think just getting that clarity on, on that, what I imagine is that that number is, even if it's higher or lower, whatever's behind it, it's probably more readily calculated by the professionals of HUD than, you know, a census that happens, you know, more infrequently. And that's probably why it's a good benchmark or baseline.
It's going to vary based on each person's income, and, and it's going to be up to the developer to determine that they're actually eligible at the start, and then he's just going to provide us with information that says, here's the basics. I don't anticipate getting a person's name, any, any privacy issue numbers. It's just, this unit is renting at this amount.
Right.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. Also, my understanding is like that those percentages would fluctuate based on number of people in the household? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So that 90 number is, that's just median across the board, not necessarily for where we would be setting the bar. It would be a sliding scale, whatever, whatever number we land on.
Two people, three people.
Gotcha. Okay. So that is my motion. Clear?
Motion by Commissioner Dubac, second by Commissioner Cola. All right, discussion on this absolutely crystal clear, non-variable motion.
So what are the, what are the numbers here?
It's the, basically, Mr. Tring is going to bring back a final proposal with those numbers baked in with a little more clarity around median household income, but we're looking at 80, 30 right now.
And this comes back, sorry, and this comes back to us for a second reading? Why do we plug those numbers in now for purpose of discussion, knowing that we can fine tune it if, if, if we get new information? Now, I guess that would be my recommendation, that we insert households' income earning no more than 80% of the median family income, and total monthly rent shall not exceed 33% of each household's income. Because we can change those later if we need to, but at least we've got a bogey.
That seems fair. You want to make an amendment?
Well, I think that's basically what I've said, but I want a little more of just background information before we make our final decision on second reading.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wrote in, is that was your motion, and I was just going to run some numbers as to what that meant.
Okay. All right, that's it.
No amendment necessary. Commissioner Cola?
Second motion.
It was already seconded, I think.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
Can you throw the Robert's Rules book at that side of the table?
He's got one.
He does, yeah. Looks thick. So, one, I'm happy that we've solved this. I mean, what a great step for the community. Like, we finally, we're putting in place some framework for some really long-term solutions here, that we've been talking about as a commission for a very long time. I also want to thank the developer. I mean, this has hit everything, a lot of the things that we asked to. You know, we had an initial plan months ago that wasn't feasible. We had a plan that we saw a month ago that we didn't like as much, and they, for our concerns, they came back to, to us with a lot of what we asked for. So this is a development that I really think's going to be a home run for this community.
Yeah, I'll just add, great job. Last time, I think we struggled a little bit because we didn't have our community benefits, you know, policies sort of categorized in a way, and we kind of preached it to Mr. and we kind of preached it to Mr. Clapp while he was here, and took it back, and you guys said, okay, well, now that we have a clarity as far as what the city commission's looking for, let's sharpen our pencils and try some unique stuff. And I'm sure there were lots of iterations, and you made the decision to go electric, like, get gas out of there. You know, have those heat pumps, which are hyper-efficient, and, you know, understanding that in the long run, that's a far better deal for you. In the short run, a little bit cost upfront, that allowed you and kind of helped you, you know, come to this conclusion and do the gyrations because you had some clarity from us. So I think that was really, really good. And I think what I see here is a, another excellent development that others can look towards. It's setting a new benchmark, especially for residential in the community. Any other discussion? All right, let's see what happens. I'll call for the vote. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so we'll have all these take a second reading. So it'll be on the agenda next time, and we'll just discuss any clarity that Mr. Twing can provide us about that benchmark and, I mean, we're talking small little tweaks, if anything.
Perfect.
All right, good luck. See you, gentlemen.
Good night.
All right. This brings us to item 10, which is the downtown outdoor ice rink proposal and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor Formanier, and members of the city commission. And I'd like to start knowing that this is not a staff recommendation for this proposal, that it's in no way casting doubt on that a rink would be great for downtown, or that it would bring people into the area. Staff's chief objection to this is cost, and ultimately, this is a cost that the promoter of Winter Blast is not going to inherit himself. He has asked the city to absorb this cost. And I think for the same reasons why Witz and Associates is not putting in a three-month temporary ice rink, it's the same reason why city staff is recommending no on this. And so moving through what these proposals are, and I'm going to only refer to one of the proposals, the only difference between them is the activation date of when the rink would start, and the subsequent decrease in pricing for the rental of that rink, which is about forty thousand dollars from starting from November or December. This is a project where we would be solely responsible for the installation and ongoing rink costs while it's in effect, the liability on the project. The role that Jonathan Witz and Associates would be playing on it is as a consultant, as the manager of the day-to-day rentals of the rink. Now, yes, all revenue would be going to the city to defray costs, and Jonathan Witz would forego a management fee for the rink in exchange for permission to use it at no charge during Winter Blast next year, which is the weekend of February 3rd through the 5th. All of this is contingent upon having the support of DTE to provide direct power to the site. Should an arrangement with DTE not be consummated, we would be looking at an additional six-figure cost to bring generators into the site to keep it active. I don't believe that's necessarily consistent with the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan that we just passed. Moreover, it would be putting the expenses, your upfront expenses, over half a million dollars on this rink. Getting into the costs of this, for the November start date, it would be about four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Again, we, this is contingent upon DTE's cooperation, which we have until October to secure. If we do not, we would lose twenty-five thousand dollars as a non-refundable deposit on the rental of that rink. Looking at the revenue streams, it's essentially sponsorship, it's rink rentals, the possibility of private events. And we've taken some of the numbers that Mr. Witz provided us from last year's Winter Blast to look at where the projected revenue would be. It's about between one hundred and eighty-six to two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, this evening, I did get revised information that there may be a net increase of about sixty thousand dollars from other sponsorships with this. It is still putting us today at a loss of between one hundred and thirty and one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that's provided that we believe the rentals would be as robust during the three-month period as they were during the limited amount of time that they were available during Winter Blast. Those costs, in effect, warrant the city staff not recommending this approval, but there's also a physical cost to bringing this rink in. And namely, that the proposal that Mr. Witz has provided has been placing this into Centennial Commons, which was not a park that was designed for high-impact events. We do anticipate we will need to make some replacements, whether it's from sod in the area. The walkways around where the rink is projected to be cannot handle heavy trucks. We have made it clear to Mr. Witz that we would not permit those trucks into the area, but it still doesn't guarantee that we may have some damage, both to the roadways and/or our irrigation system in there. Should the city commission move forward with the proposal, we would rather see it in the location that it was in last year, the farmer's market. But this also is not without complication as well. There are rentals that have already been made through that three-month period, and we would have to work with Ms. Mazer from the farmer's market and the Royal Police Department to determine how we could accommodate those events, and moving them from the west lot to the east lot, and what the capacity for those events would be. So with that, city staff thinks it's a great idea, but it's at what cost? And ultimately, this cost for the city, for our staff, and this was a discussion that involved many departments other than the city manager's office, it was a unanimous no on our end. But we are open to discussion, and should you move in a different direction, we'll work as diligently as possible to try to make this a reality.
Questions? Start with them. Commissioner Macy or Commissioner Duba? I don't have a question. Okay, Commissioner Duba, we'll start with questions first.
Sure. Now, I appreciate staff concerns. The price tag is eye-popping, I think chiseling away at it, I think has been happening since its inception. What direct conversations have been had with the DDA? This seems exactly the kind of thing that a DDA exists for.
I have not had any direct conversations. I do know, obviously, Mr. Brex is on the DDA, Mr. Twing's our executive director, they've been aware of this proposal for months. I've had informal conversations with the Royal Chamber of Commerce, of which two DDA members are on that board. There wasn't an overwhelming interest in, let's see how we can work together to make this, this work.
Mr. Brex, no conversations formally or otherwise with the DDA membership? This feels like exactly why we have a DDA.
Yeah. So we had a meeting last week, and no, that was not brought up.
So if our primary concern is price tag, is there a reason we did not pursue that particular option?
Well, this is initiated by the developer, so it's, not for staff to say, you need to place it in this direction, but that's something that the commission would request that it be reviewed by the DDA, then, then we will pursue it that way.
I know during the Park Design Task Force, we did talk about, you know, heavy machinery and how we were designing that. But I, you know, also, we talked about activating the parking this exact way. In fact, MKSK had renderings of the final park design that we chose with an ice rink in it. So did something change in the design process that's preventing us from executing that vision, or are these just elements that would have always been there that we need to consider in making this decision?
I think the conversation of what is a high-impact versus a low-impact use is one that we haven't really had holistically, but this is a concern, and we brought the original proposal both to our engineer and our DPS director, and they were voicing these infrastructural concerns as well.
So are they concerns, are those risks that can be mitigated with proper planning and operation, or?
I think when you're depositing a rink into an environment, a new environment, you hope for the best, but money is how you mitigate the risk ultimately. If there's, if there's something we need to cure, we're going to have to cure it, and that may be an added expense to the expenses I've already outlined today.
Sure. Do we know, in the cost breakdown, how much of that is the value of the equipment and stuff that's actually constitutes the rink, and how much is the labor to build it? Do we have any idea of that?
I think that's actually broken out in both proposals.
Because the figure seems so wildly high. Like, for a half million dollars, can we just buy our own equipment?
That's an option.
Okay.
Those are figures that were provided by Mr. Witz. And I see him in the audience if he wants to speak to any of those exact soft-cost expenses, or hard costs for that matter.
And I don't mean wildly high, as if I know what this should cost. It just seems like, for that much money, you'd buy your own? It's like, you know, renting a, yeah, floor sander, it'd cost you, you know, grand to rent it for a week, and you could have bought your own for, you know, eleven fifty, kind of thing.
I cannot say that I've priced out a permanent ice rink. Mr. Filipski?
That seems to be more your wheelhouse now.
No? He just priced out pools.
Okay.
They're light pools, except they're frozen.
So I, I feel like this is a concept that, for the most part, is exactly the kind of thing that most of us envisioned happening in Centennial Commons. I think there was a very energetic reception to the short stint that we had the rink in the farmer's market last year. I appreciate the concern for the infrastructure we built into the park. I just feel like those are things we're going to address in detail, you know, through planning, and also insurance, and then, you know, who bears that cost? Yeah, I'm willing to invest some as a city, but I really feel like this is like DDA bread and butter. Everything that this achieves is why a DDA exists. And it feels to me like they should be the primary partner. I would be happy to work with them to mitigate some of the risks that we're talking about as far as infrastructure in the park that we just finally got done. So that's an important consideration as well. But financially, this feels like well within the DDA's wheelhouse to make happen.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay. So I'm going to read a statement, if that's okay with everybody. This is from Commissioner Perush, who's not able to be here tonight. And she wanted to, she wanted to put her two cents in about this. So just to be clear, these are not my views, these are the views of Commissioner Perush, I'll say that again at the end. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend this evening's meeting, but Commissioner Macy has currently agreed to read the statement concerning the proposed use of Centennial Commons for Winterfest activities. As the chairperson of the Downtown Park Task Force, which facilitated the design of Centennial Commons, I'm opposed to the proposal to use it as a location for the ice rink during Winterfest next winter. The task force oversaw an extensive public engagement process for the design of the park, through which we received about twelve hundred individual comments from members of the public with design suggestions. These comments became the basis of three design schemes, which were then further refined based on additional public comments. In the end, the design included those features and design elements that reflected the Royal Community's vision of a downtown park. None of the design elements incorporated into the park were based on the anticipation that the park would be used as a significant staging area for large commercial events in the downtown. The park is a small staging area that can be used and has been used for small performances, but not large ones that would be typical of a major festival. And even though some of the public comments in the design process mentioned an ice rink, the public use of an area in the park for an ice rink was not a component in any of the final design schemes. The final design included moving the Veterans Monument a short distance to the east in order to accommodate pedestrian movements through the park, especially around the northwest corner of the park where pedestrians move to and from the Henry Ford Medical Center, the Second Street parking deck, and the library. Opponents of the move falsely claimed that the proposed monument move, as well as overall park design, was really an attempt to accommodate large festivals and food truck events in the park. The task force and the city commission strongly denied the park opponents' claims, and publicly stated on numerous occasions that the city was not building the park to accommodate the desire of commercial event promoters to have space for their events. Additionally, the park has no driver entrances, which would be necessary for any commercial or heavy equipment vehicles to enter the park, and the concrete walkways were not constructed to accommodate the weight of vehicles of any type. I think the idea of having an ice rink in the downtown is a good one, just not in this location as a component of a large commercial festival. If the city were to approve the request to place the ice rink in Centennial Commons during Winterfest, it would be contradicting the public assurances that were made to justify the final park design. Such a contradiction would be a stunning reversal of the public assurances that we made, as well as to the public at large, that no large-scale commercial events will be programmed into the park spaces. I'm hopeful that the rest of the city commission agrees with me and rejects this proposal. Pat Perush. So those are the, that's the opinions of Commissioner Perush. And if I may, Mayor, so I was surprised to receive this statement from Commissioner Perush. I don't think it's, my memory, I was not on the Downtown Park Task Force, that an ice rink would not be part of this. I had the same feeling that we had talked about that in multiple occasions, that it would be so amazing to have an ice rink in the downtown park. And when I picture it in my head, like, it's sort of a more ground-level ice rink, and that park activated, hopefully with those, you know, the fountains don't work in the winter, but there's still lights there, and the lights going around there, and the lights stringing, it seems gorgeous, idyllic to me. I love the idea. And I hear the concerns, and the major concern that I share is what Commissioner Duba has already stated, the cost of this. The cost is very high for us to be doing this programming for this event, and it seems like this is what the DDA is made to do. So to me, that seems like the best way to go forward on this, is to see how we can work with a DDA to find some way to make this happen. As we heard in public comment, some people came to speak about the ice rink, but most people were talking about something else, and were like, by the way, I like that ice rink idea. I think it would be a huge draw to the downtown, and would be transformative of the downtown in the winter, when it's, it's difficult to get people to come. I don't want to discount what city staff are saying about the challenges to that, and I think we need to make sure that we're listening to them and accommodating those issues, rather than just saying, no, 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 make it happen. We need to think about how we're going to, how we're going to step through this. So I, it feels awkward, having just given that long statement about how this is not what is planned for, to say that I actually feel personally the opposite. I think this is exactly what the downtown park was planned to do in the winter, and I hope there's a way that we can make it happen. I do think the price tag is something that is, would be challenging for us to agree to at this, at the, at the level it is right now, as, as the city itself. I think the DDA needs to get involved. I think that's all.
Madam, I mean, certainly, there's a conversation that's probably warranted with the DDA, and I know because anything that's placed in the downtown, we always have this feeling that, you know, it's the DDA's responsibility, and I think there's, just like you heard a number of the businesses say, this would be really transformational. I'll also argue that this is a recreational opportunity for all of our residents, you know, and the geography of it, yes, it's in the downtown, but, you know, for us, it's not a gimmick to bring people to the downtown. When we went to the Ice Arena, yeah, did we frequent stores when we were there at the farmer's market on occasion, but really, the drive was recreation for, you know, Friday night, get out with the family, something really affordable and manageable, and we would skate. And it was really, really nice. And to have that as an option for families, especially as costs are starting to grow, a night out on the town, that doesn't break the bank. You know, you can walk here, you can take the bus here, you can park for free for two hours in the garage and have a night with your family or a friend or a date. You know, to me, it's a, it's a broader recreational activity we have to be aware of as well. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of mine, and I'm, I'm inclined to agree with the assertion that this seems tailor-made for a DDA. So I would very much support an effort to pass this along, to see if they had any interest. I would like to know how soon we will know if DTE is willing to support it, because the, the idea of generators is antithetical to everything we've been working on. Not only that, but they're noisy and just really don't add to the experience. But my real, my biggest concern is site restoration. The budget here is for five thousand dollars. I mean, after seeing how we planted sod and in the fall, and saw how over, over the winter and through the spring, sod established itself into durable lawns, I'm trying to figure out how we can take this rink up in February and put sod down in its place that is going to be as nice as what we had and what we envisioned. So I may, I may turn that to Mr. Filipski here, if anyone else?
I will say that cost, that is a cost that is heavily from campus ownership and places in the work there. It's quite, it's probable that that cost will be more than five thousand dollars.
Seems like it, me too.
In terms of the sod replacement, if I understood the question correctly, no, it wouldn't be replaced in the wintertime when it was taken down. It would likely be delayed until early spring. So there would be a period of time in the beginning of the season when people were looking to enjoy the park where that sod would be installed. Did I understand your question correctly, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes. And so would that whole area be blocked off in the spring as that sod became established?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, to me, I mean, I love the idea of skating, but, I mean, to Commissioner Perush's point, this is the park we designed, and we're shoehorning something in there that will affect what we've designed and what people have come to expect. So I'm, I mean, I'm kind of leaning against this for those multiple reasons.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. Actually, I want to start by asking Mr. Fenton, can you pull up an image for me? If you go to our agenda center, if you go to the Downtown Park Task Force meeting of December 18th, 2019, there's a presentation that actually shows a beautiful ice rink in the center of this park. So designers, engineers, a lot of thought has gone into replacing the sod. What happens when we have an ice rink in our downtown? So I think that image is important for all of us to see here tonight, because this, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Perush, I love her historical perspective. I think that in this case, we actually did talk about this in the past. These are items that had happened. And I just, yeah, so it's December 18th, 2019.
I'm learning this as I go. Bear with me. Which meeting was that?
So in the upper right there, you have to click on 2019, and then December 18th. And then go ahead, click down on the presentation. So once this opens up, when you go to page 52 here, we'll see this, you know, this is beautifully designed, because this is, we spent hours and hours and hours going through what this park should look like. And we had some amazing ideas and designs, and sure not all of them happened. I'll go up a little. But right here, you see that this was in fact presented to us, because this is a downtown park. There are four seasons, and unfortunately in Michigan, most of them are cold. It, I think, is a tremendous waste of space to not activate this park in the wintertime. As has been mentioned here already, you know, people will go out. It's very rare that you see so many restaurants come before us and say, hey, this is a really good idea, you guys should do this. And there was a unified voice from not only restaurants, but retailers in our downtown. And I remember being at the ice rink last year when I was at the farmer's market, and it was that big monstrosus-looking thing, right? Like, it was huge. You had to walk up it. I fell down it a couple times because I'm just not stable on regular shoes, low skates, try to go down that ramp. And this one is entry-level, you know, and I'm sure the one that we're proposing is about the same. So this, you'd be able to see people enjoying the downtown. And talking to people on the ice rink last year, when, you know, we floated the idea that, hey, we want to put this in Centennial Commons, people loved that idea. I think in general, I mean, it uses our park. So I also appreciate staff's concerns and that, you know, there will be issues with, you know, without doubt, this could be the first year, but I, you know, to not do it, I think, is a disservice. We could figure out what works and what doesn't work, and this is a one-year idea. So if it doesn't work, we replace some sod, we replace some sprinkler heads, we don't do it again. But to not do it because we think it might be a bad idea, I think, you know, we should take a leap here. As goes the DDA funding, you know, a couple things here. I think that we asked to approve it, and then also with the stipulation that the DDA provides 75 to 100,000, I think that this is something that we can bake into our agreement here. So we're starting the, you know, I wish the conversation had started at the DDA already, but I don't want to pass this up because it hasn't. So I think we can initiate the conversation and say, you know what, we're going to start here right now. If you guys want to do this, we're on board, we'll pay the rest, you guys have to pay that. There's also mention in the agreement about making sure that we hit sponsorships, so I want to make sure that we have a guaranteed sponsorship amount, that Mr. Witz can come back to us and say, you know, I guarantee if we don't hit this number, I will make up that shortfall. So, you know, that way, we're kind of covering ourselves and making sure that we have both buy-in from the DDA and then buy-in from the sponsorships. If it costs us 100, $150,000, that's a park amenity. We often spend money on parks in our city. We often spend, you know, the ice arena is offering at a loss as it is. You know, we cover the cost because that's a resident amenity, and it's not a loss, but it's a service provided. So much like we don't make money on trash pickup, we might not make money on this, but it'll be something that everyone enjoys.
Commissioner Hunt?
I share the concerns that were stated here today, mostly for the costs associated. But since this is a question for Mr. Fenton, since this is a outdoor event for the good of recreation in our community, is this something that could be, the cost at least, be used, the CARES Act funds, could those be used for something like this?
We haven't had Guide House weigh in on this. My inclination is it would be, especially if it's being managed by a private entity. If we were to take complete ownership of it, I don't think we would be able to qualify ourselves as an expense there. So I'm not going to say with 100% certainty, but probably a solid 90-ish that ARPA could pay for this.
And there are funds that, well, I meant CARES Act, not necessarily.
I don't know that we have any funding from the CARES Act that would be applicable to this.
It's my understanding that we did have some that still needed to be used, but maybe I'm wrong.
There is, CARES Act is associated with those that have been impacted by COVID, and so you would have to differentiate individuals, you know, the skaters coming out, and you'd have to gain information from those.
Right, I'm flipping those around, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, so I would not go the CARES Act route, because we'd have to get approval from HUD, but ARPA is a different story. It's, I agree with Mr. Fenton.
You're right. It's a long day, I flipped those around.
It would be analogous to the Art, Speech, and Needs Grant that you provided last year under aid to a pandemic-infected industry, in this case tourism.
I mean, I'll just add, you know, yeah, I mean, with anything, there's going to be some issues, there's going to be some time, there's going to be some money. I think there's two things, since I've been serving on this public body here, that people have asked for, an outdoor swimming pool and an ice rink. And so for me, you know, we finally have an opportunity in front of us to have an ice rink that's very well thought out, very well managed. It does come with a little bit of sod replacement, potentially a bang-up of a sprinkler here and there. It comes with some financial risk if we're unable to get and secure the sponsorships, if maybe some of the ARPA funding is not eligible, or it is, you know, that's still a little bit of a mystery. There may be higher rentals than we expect, there may be lower rentals than we expect. We may find that we bring out so many people that, you know, parking revenues grow. We may find that we bring in so many people that we can, you know, look at, you know, maybe some of our small businesses don't require additional assistance in other areas. I mean, who knows? I think all of that's going to be a mystery, and we won't know the answer. I think the key question is, can we tolerate the 130 to close to $200,000 risk to bring a recreational amenity that people have been looking for for a long time? I agree, like, look, hey, in April, you plant some sod, you're going to have to put that yellow tape around that area, and I would imagine that for a couple months, people wouldn't be able to really actively use that area, but, I mean, how many people are lying out in the grassy area in April, May? You know what I mean? Anyhow, versus the thousands of people that will be enjoying the skating rink, of which most of them, or a lot of them, will be Royal Oakers, and a lot of them will be people we're bringing in from outside the town. I'm not saying it's a gamble. I think for the cost, for me, it makes sense to offer this recreational amenity. The gamble is, is how much upside are we going to get with support of the DDA? How much upside are we going to get with the support of sponsorship? Once something's approved, sponsorships tend to come in. You know, people don't tend to offer up sponsorships unless they know something's a done deal. So, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll find some opportunities, but I think to me, this is, it's not going to come without any sort of headaches, but it also is temporary. We're not buying, you know, a rink, and in the event that we find out this year it's not the perfect spot, or that we find out it's not worth the effort or the funding, or we didn't get the attendance we thought, okay, but that allows us to go back and learn and come up with the next idea for the amenitization of our downtown and recreation, and a way to drive business for our much hurting retailers and restaurants. So, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I will point out that this was the primary, one of the primary activity areas for our Juneteenth celebration this past year. So if we've got this roped off from April, May, and into June, we may be denying ourselves access to that space for that event.
Commissioner Cole?
No, I guess, having looked into sod recently, actually, it's a 30-day, you can't walk in it. But that's if you have to replace the whole glade. I mean, there's also more likely, there are just spots and patches that have to be replaced as opposed to a whole glade. And I will also point out, I've used this once or twice over the weekend, the Detroit Tigers just completely replaced their outfield after Elton John left a week ago, and they've lost multiple baseball games on their field since then. So there are ways to do it.
Commissioner Dubak?
No, I agree. I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that we're just going to rope off this huge section of the park every year, especially if this is a success and we plan on doing it year after year, we're going to have to figure out how to do it, if that just means replacing the sod each year, because we're going to put the rink there each year. So be it, that's what they do at Campus Marshes every year, is fresh sod every year. That's about a $5,000 to $10,000 expense for the sod, I don't know about the installation, which is not unreasonable in the midst of a, you know, half million dollar expense, field one, majority of which is paid for by sponsorships, and ideally the DDA. Especially if it means activating our park for those six months out of the year that it is otherwise a very cold, very unused space. We paid a lot of money, put a lot of effort into this park, activating it for that half of the year, as Commissioner Cole points out, that his call seems a reasonable thing to do, and I would like to identify solutions to make this work versus reasons why we shouldn't do it, because I think they are all solvable problems, the sod being one of them. Certainly, it wouldn't make sense to activate it in the winter if it only became unusable in the spring and summer.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I think I agree with what Commissioner Dubak just summarized. Although, I was just going to say to the mayor, about $130,000 for recreational opportunities is a lot, that's a lot to spend for a recreational opportunity that's not permanent. Like, we could redo a tennis court for that, and then that would last us 10 years. So that's where the sticking point for me is, if we're talking about this as a recreational opportunity that we want to offer our residents, great, I think it'd be a wonderful one to offer, but I think we need to be proportionate to the rest of the way that we're spending our money on recreation in the city, which is why I think, I mean, I just, I can't get over the fact that this is just, this is what the DDA should be doing. Like, I don't even know why it's here instead of there. Like, they're the one, they have a budget, I know they do, and this, I mean, you're saying it's recreational, which is true, so that's part of what we're providing, but this is, it's in the downtown, it is definitely activating this part of the downtown, and it will benefit, as we heard, our restaurants and retailers. You know, maybe you came here specifically for recreation, but I happen to know that a lot of times you walk down here. I suspect that maybe sometimes on the way home, you'll stop somewhere, and I just feel like that's going to be true for a lot of people. If they come to skate, they probably aren't just going to skate and go every time. So I think it's super cool. I want to make it work, but I want to hear what the DDA is going to offer to this, because I think it's, that's the right way to go.
And I appreciate you bringing up the tennis court example, because I think there's also an interesting way to look at it too, right? So you can put in a tennis court for $130,000, and I think we should do the tennis courts. Like, don't get me wrong, that's going to be in the master plan, it's not an either-or. And you can have two, four people playing on it during daylight hours in the summertime, and I don't know what that number adds up to over 10 years, but, you know, it's maybe 1,000 uses. I mean, the tennis courts often stay empty a lot, you know, but then people play in the morning, or they play in the evenings, and, you know, they're not used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And they certainly aren't used, you know, in the wintertime. Conversely, you have an ice rink that theoretically can have 100, 200 people on it at any given, I don't know what the capacity is, but, you know, all weekend, all night, you know, I don't know how many people we'd cycle through it, but I imagine it's in the multiple thousands. So when you look at it, yes, there's a difference between having a fixed asset that you spend money on, but also in my mind, I'm looking at how many hours of use and entertainment and hours of recreation by the thousands of people that use it weigh against, you know, maybe, you know, when you use the example of a tennis court, you know, yes, it's the same price, let's say, but, you know, do you have actually less hours per resident of use? So I don't know what that answer is, I just know that thousands and thousands and thousands of hours will be used of recreation at this ice arena, both with Royal Oakers and non-Royal Oakers, which makes me make that number seem somewhat reasonable to me. I'll go Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Douglas.
Okay, but yeah, you made those numbers up. I mean, like, it's reasonable, it was reasonable making up of the numbers, but we don't know how many people are going to use the ice rink, we don't know how many people are using our tennis courts, and I guess I disagree mostly with your saying it's not an either-or, it absolutely is an either-or. If it weren't an either-or, why aren't all of our tennis courts in good shape in this city? We are spending $130,000 every time a tennis court goes down. So, you know, I do, that's where I'm coming at this from, is that I see that we have a limited pot of money to do these things we want to do for recreation in the city, and we should be taking care of our responsibilities like the tennis courts, and the DDA should be helping out with things like this that are activating our downtown.
Well, I do know, I played tennis in high school, and with typical court of two tennis courts, the maximum you should be playing is four people, eight people total in two courts, so the maximum you'll get is eight times 24 hours a day if people play through the night. So you're right, I don't know how many people would skate, I'd have to imagine it would be, in my example I gave, much higher with ice skating than it would be for a tennis court. That's my point I'm trying to make. Commissioner Douglas?
Well, to that point, I mean, surely Mr. Witz has statistics on how many people, at least how many people rented skates last year, so I'm sure that's knowable, but the reason I raised my hand was to point out that Campus Marshes in the summer replaces their ice skating rink with a beach, not with sod. So just for the record.
Hey, not a horrible idea for our park either.
It would be volleyball.
Oh, man, that's a really good idea. Actually, it's a really volleyball net.
Because there's sand underneath it.
Less watering? Wait, this is sounding like a really good environmentally friendly idea.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, we've talked about, a lot about the DDA here tonight, and they don't meet for another four weeks, three weeks, or so?
Three, three months.
Three. So, Mr. Fenton, is there, is time about the assets here? Do we have, do we have some deadlines we have to hit if we want to have this in our park this year?
If it's my understanding, Mr. Witz, you can clarify if I'm wrong, that you do need to at least make the commitment to move forward. You may have the $25,000 non-refundable deposit at play, but the rental company itself needs direction on whether they can hold that rental, and I think that can't wait a month.
Okay. So, you know, if that can't wait a month, I am comfortable right now with moving, at least going to the next step, saying that, you know, we will, we do want this, and we could still figure this out. This is not to say the DDA cannot spend funds on this. We are partners with the DDA, and in fact, I would ask Mr. Break to bring this to them next month and say, you know, the city needs a sponsorship on this, because we do, you know, this does, this is why the DDA exists. The DDA exists to bring people into the downtown. This rink will bring people into our downtown, and it clearly had broad business, you know, both retail and restaurant support, so this is, this is a home run for them. I don't think we should let it die at this table because it didn't go there first. I don't, you know, and if it's a $25,000 roll the dice for us to say, okay, we're going to take it, you know, but we're not going to do it if DT can't put shore power there, I don't think anyone has the stomach for a generator in our park that goes against everything we want. I think that we make sure we hit the sponsorships, because, you know, that's a number that we've looked to, you know, we need to have guaranteed. And then we also make sure that the DDA is going to be a sponsor. And if all of those line up, great, we can have it. If not, we might be out $25,000 that we could see can be applied to the rental during Winterfest, because, you know, we'll have an ice rink one way or another. But I think, it's unfortunate to me that it is at the point where we do have to make a decision, but to let it die here because of that, I don't think is good for the community. We're going to have this right now. And the last point I'm going to make is, you know, we seem to say this in cycles, but COVID is once again coming back up. It's going to, you know, wintertime's coming, we've seen the same, same thing happen last three winters in a row, that spikes can go back up. This is an outdoor amenity that we're going to provide to residents during another potentially not fun winter. So I see a lot of reasons to say yes. I understand staff's reputation is to say no. I understand the money behind it. I think that we could still work on that in the meantime.
You going to put that in form of emotion?
Everything I just said's motion.
Starting December 3rd.
That's like a tsunami. You second it?
No.
Yeah, okay, I was going to ask for clarity. I was like, I'm not sure what you're seconding.
So I moved, they reapproved this, and starting So I moved that we approve this, starting on the November date, but I'm definitely open to my commissioners if they want to change that. Starting the November date with the contingency that we do not do this if we do not get shore power connections from DTE, the assurance of a guaranteed amount of sponsorships from John Witz and Associates, and then a sponsorship from the Downtown Development Authority in the amount of $100,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo, seconded by Commissioner Macy. Okay, discussion? Commissioner, well, Mr. Leal might want to have a clarification.
I've got a legal question concerning the resolution and the motion is made.
Wait, you're my lawyer, I asked you the question.
Well, I guess it's more of a process question, legal process question. You are authorizing city staff to enter into agreement with Mr. Witz and Associates without actually seeing the agreement or approving it. That's, usually we bring an agreement before you that's already, you know, more or less agreed to by both sides, at least by staff and Mr. Witz. I don't want to stall this, but it's just, I, when I see that kind of a provision and what you're proposing, I feel better if that portion was modified to start the process of drafting an agreement to come back for final approval, which is fine, but just to give that power to staff to enter an agreement without you all ever looking at it is concerning from a legal standpoint.
So, dumb question on my end. When we look at it for tonight, the resolution, I mean, we just have information, we have, hold on, let me scroll up here. Okay, that's budget and projections, but the only, yeah, it says authorize city staff to enter into an agreement for the installation rental management. So that's in the resolution that was actually provided by staff.
And that's correct, it's just those three, what exactly would constitute the installation, at least the division of responsibilities, the rental, the management specifying, a lot of that will need to be hashed out post this meeting as to, you know, making sure that the agreement's set, because in my experience when dealing with, in contracts, negotiating contracts, there's always going to be things that come up that weren't contemplated, and not to say that they can't be overcome, it's just with that is something that, so I would recommend that we bring a final agreement to you, and it could be...
The next meeting?
The next meeting or late August, but at least you've given the authorization for us to start the process of going forward. As Commissioner Colo has said, it's just, it would be better if we can bring back an agreement during this process so that you are satisfied with the terms and conditions that are put in there. Again, my recommendation has nothing, it does not mean I want to stop this process, it's just I want to make sure that the city is covered on its end.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, we could qualify it to say that it comes back at the next meeting. I don't know if that timing is perfect, or we could qualify it and say to enter into at least the ability to reserve the $25,000 and then bring back the overall agreement, so at least we take and keep, keep it going with the first part of it, you know, so it's not off the table, and then, you know, in two weeks we'd have a final agreement in place, because I imagine it's going to take a week anyways to do it. So you're talking about a week, but we, a short, a small agreement, maybe we authorize you to do the small agreement to at least get us, or have the ability to reserve the equipment, I think is what's driving it, correct? The $25,000?
That's correct.
That's correct, and again, I think Mr. Witz is here, he can clarify that, and I thought you were asking for a separate sponsorship from Mr. Witz as well, I think he probably would need to clarify that as well.
Yeah. Commissioner Colo, in your motion you discussed...
Yeah. So I believe, I believe that there is a sponsorship projection. In fact, if, I could ask Mr. Witz to clarify that sponsorship number, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, this would be really outside of order, I'll allow it, since there's a motion on the table if Mr. Witz wants to come to the...
A very small comment on this one section that we're talking about.
I was trying to understand, I've been working with this, and I've put a proposal together and information, I've had no time to address the commission, I just, I was just trying to understand that, it's been, you know, frustrating not to be able to respond to anything that's been said at all, so...
Yeah, I think, I think technically Commissioner Colo put a motion on the table before we got you up here, but, so we're going to bypass that rule, and so you're here now to answer that question, and then I think I'll give you mayor's privilege, even though there's a motion on the table, to talk a little bit about the proposal, if you guys are okay.
Yeah, it's, so, the source of frustration, again, and it's just emblematic of not being able to address the body after the magic that happened in February that we all saw. Thousands and thousands of residents were out having a good time, the impact on businesses were, was just incredible. And as a vision and something that I've shared with many of you on what, on what this could mean to business and to the residents, and the research was done, I approached city staff early in April, was told that we could not deal with this now because of budget stuff, or we could have put together the leadership to bring the DDA in and, and come to the group as a, as a team. I was told that there was not time to address this issue when I said that we needed long-term planning on, on doing this. This is a vision I see for the city, not for myself, and to the point of when there was negative city response, I went out in the last week and raised 100 grand, and I didn't even get to say that to you guys tonight. I didn't even have the ability to update you when I had given city leadership an update that we had raised 100 grand since last, since the last time. Or the update that I've talked to DDA members that are willing to support this and have off the record said that they're ready to collaborate with this body. And I haven't had a chance to answer any questions or comments or make any statements at all after putting a lot of work into trying to make something magic for the city. And, you know, it's, my track record here is long and significant, and, and I, you know, and I think there's a solution here that could be put into a proposal, and just in what the city attorney said, we approved the Winter Blast without an agreement and had a perfect, you know, fair workings with the deputy city manager and put that agreement together in great faith. I completely trust the city and the deputy city manager to operate in good faith and working together in agreement that had basic terms. The risk here, as it was said, is $25,000. In the last week, Henry Ford has stepped in and agreed verbally to be a sponsor of this, it's also a statement of them as a stakeholder, the Soaring Eagle Water Park is, has agreed to step in as a sponsor, that shows the regional draw of this, M3 Investments who came here earlier spoke about doubling his commitment, his commitment was already there and is not even presented against this bottom line. So the liability in just the last week and a half has gone down 100,000, and the DDA, if brought to them in the spirit of collaboration, would probably also absorb 100,000. And I think that lowers the contingency and the risk on a significant, on a significant basis. The reason I mostly wanted to say something is that the, the term of this rental expires tomorrow, I've extended it. At the time, there was a rink available in April, it became unavailable, then the rink situation in Dallas, which is actually a bigger rink slightly than what we had in the farmer's market, a 60 by 100 instead of a 52 by 90, so we even have a bigger rink that is there and is free, and, and I asked them, because we had power issues to work out, and I'm completely in agreement with the issue related to this can't happen by generators, and there's no, you know, there's no appetite for, for me to work on the event if it has generators from both a cost and environmental perspective. So the $25,000 catch-all could not only give time on the generator research, but it could give time on the DDA research. I had a misunderstanding, you know, certainly in, in talking to the city manager, who mentioned the city was specifically activating the park, so I have brought this to, you know, this body first, and there are also obviously visions with the park that have been addressed and so forth, and, and would feel comfortable that this was a collaboration with the DDA. And when I was given the heads-up the DDA should, should be involved, I've reached out to the DDA, and there is a strong appetite for that, and if there weren't, that could be an absolute point of, you know, cancellation, you know, of the agreement. But your liability is going from, you know, 433,000, which wasn't a real number, but it's automatically dropped to 333,000, again, then drop all the other, you know, money that would come in, and if the DDA kicked in 100, you know, then you're starting at, at 233 with every dollar of the rink that comes in going to offset that. One business alone, one business alone could benefit 100 grand from this rink over a three month period, those businesses that are across the street, one business could have that kind of impact with the people that this could draw. And there's other things that I wanted to say or present, but I will, I will not do that, just unless you guys have, are asking for that, but I think there is a very strong case, it is not just a few restaurants that have spoken, it's Restaurant Association that has spoken and was represented tonight, and the quality of life would be phenomenal, this would be magical, it would complement events like the tree lighting, other winter festivities that I know take place in the city, and it would be just the background of skating and shopping promotion, retail, skating and dining nights, all sorts of things that could be done. And, you know, I'm sorry for my emotion tonight, this, we came off an amazingly successful risk that you guys bought into as a commission in bringing Winter Blast here. It was a home run, and there was just a vision to, to see something special continue for the city, to continue a magic, you know, in a very manageable way. The three months of this is not a big commercial festival, three months of this is a steady traffic, a steady amount of rink traffic that will, you know, average in the 300 to 400 people per night that the rink can handle on a, you know, at a time, 300 people, and that turned over probably on primetimes, three times, four times a day on the weekends. And, you know, so this is, this is such an amazing opportunity for us, and I take my relationship with the city, you know, very seriously, and, and this one was, was one that I wish there was a little bit in the beginning of just the vision of what we all did together. And you guys put a lot of faith into, and a lot of risk into us. And just a quick mention on the park management, our company is the official event planner for the Detroit Riverfront Conservancy, which was just named as a number one riverwalk in the entire country. They have put their faith on us in doing all events on their park spaces that we manage. We take pride, and when it came, and, and just to give you an example, at Winter Blast, when there was any thought that the zip line, which was approved and accepted by everyone to go in there, could do any bit of damage to the park, we had to move it out, you know, and, and, and we worked with Aaron and folks to create that move. We take the responsibility seriously. In the proposal I, that I sent that was amended to Commissioner Douglas's, Douglas's point, we raised the sod replacement and the contingency for that up to 15,000, but we also raised the guaranteed sponsorship revenue from a 60 projected to 100,000 guaranteed. So I'm simply asking the, the commission to the point of that, trust us to do an agreement. The worst risk that would be, would be $25,000, and I'll even take your word for it. I don't need, I don't need a piece of paper for us to put the money down on the rink. I trust in the city, I have worked on agreements with Deputy City Manager and the city manager before, I trust that we'll, we'll get it done. And the only risk on the city's part is $25,000, and your cost is going to go down into the 100 to $120,000 range to create this magic, and one business might have the impact of that investment, one business alone, from the traffic. And so, you know, I am apologizing for, for my emotion. I, it's not something you've seen before, and I, I don't, I don't enjoy putting it on display after doing this for so many years. This is, you know, I, I wish you were behind us and believed in, in us, and, and I'm talking about the commission, but I wish, you know, we said, let's, let's, how do we make this, how do we make this go? And yes, the DDA would have been a, a good direction to go in earlier on, but it is here, and it is available, and it is ready to go for you. And I, I put all my reputation on, you know, delivering a quality experience, getting people down here, managing all the sponsorship, all of your stakeholders, anybody from Henry Ford to M3 Investments, people that believe in this, I'll make sure that their signs are up, that their logos are on the rink, that they, that they are fulfilled and supported for buying into the city and the benefits to everybody, you know, that are there. And I would just like if the interaction, if there's a question, you know, or something that's going on in the decision of this, I'd just like the ability to, you know, to answer a question or just be in, in real time in the same way the developers were here before and other, other things, because I, I could have maintained a little more, a little less emotion and, and, but still, you know, delivered some of the, the thoughts that I, that I had. So, thank you, and if there are any more questions, but again, I am just requesting the motion that you guys have an out, if you don't have the DDA, that you have an out if, if the, we can't figure out the power situation, and, and, and that, that you give us a chance, because if the DDA comes in and I've raised 100 grand, and to the commissioner's point, I put in writing to the deputy city manager that we would commit $25,000 of our, of our commitment if I'm not able to raise the 25. But to the point that the mayor's made, you know, when you announce this stuff and you mention who's on board and who the partners are, you can build off of that. And, and this is magic waiting to happen. And, you know, and, and one thing about the rink, it doesn't get, it is seasonal, it can, you can skate on the rink that we are bringing in up to 55, 60 degrees, so if you have warm days, you can be out there in November, December, we get some of the days that we've been hit with global warming and so forth, you know, the rink is going to not melt, it's going to have a chiller on there, and after one year, you can research how you want to, how you want to do it for the future. Detroit invested 3 million, and then they pay hundreds of thousands of dollars annually to replace and, and make changes in there on an annual basis to, to do it. And we wouldn't in the first year be able to deliver the sound and the spectacular lighting that's there, but we'd have sound and lights, and, and we'd make it Royal Oak, and we'd rock the heck out of this thing. So, anyway, thank you, and I'm available for any questions or would like the ability to answer any, but that's the simple amendment, and, you know, to the city attorney's point, I trust you. So I trust, I don't need the money, I just am asking for the commitment or the backstop, but I trust my ability to work with city management to get it done, and if it doesn't get done, then obviously we don't get that deposit back. And that deposit involves two things, the 25,000 from the city and our commitment to use the rink, you know, for the later period at Winter Blast if it doesn't come through. So we're, we're putting up the 190 grand, whatever it is, for the rink, plus your deposit will allow them to hold the rink that is much more valuable to the skating company in November and December, and those are the prime skating months. There was a message about traffic being not as great after Winter Blast, that's the same thing that happens in Detroit, it scales back. So the idea of starting in mid-November, it puts a skating rink right on trajectory for the prime season, it allows us to open not on the same date as Detroit, but on a similar date, have those busy Thanksgiving, the Friday shopping, the Monday shopping, all the things that come around leading into December, and into tree lighting, and into, you know, just a lot of magic. So I just wanted to respond to a few things, especially the point about the agreement. We have done agreements for years together. I trust the city, I trust you guys, and I trust the ability to make that on those simple terms. And then, you know, if it doesn't happen, then we're out the deposit. But if you vote to approve it, I know we can get the agreement done, and the out clause would be there, so. And that's, and, and that's what I, that's what I'm asking for and suggesting, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Witz? Mr. Leal?
I just want to clarify, all you're asking right now for this commission is 25,000, which would not require an agreement, which is require the commission to approve that or, and make that purchase order while we're pending, or drafting an agreement. The difference between now and Winter Blast last year is that we had a lot more detail that it was very easy to put an agreement together, because you all, you and city management had already been discussing all the terms indirectly. The difference here is that we have contingencies, you know, there's been, to me, as I interpret a consensus, the commission that wants the DDA involved in this, that's another party involved in this, because they're going to want somehow to also be part of an agreement to give the money to you. That's what complicates this process, which is making... this process, which makes me uncomfortable to just have staff have an agreement when we now have another entity who's going to be a part of this process. Not to say that me personally, that I don't trust you. I know that you've, you know, indirectly, we have negotiated, where I've advised the city staff, and everything came to fruition. But now we have other contingencies, whether DDA is involved, and if not, then what? So this contract will look differently than what we did last year.
I can respond to that. Is it just such a simple thing? If the DDA doesn't come through, then, you know, then the deal's done, and the twenty-five thousand's there. I don't think it's a complicated situation. The DDA's contribution could be a direct deal with us, and the deal that the city is backstopping would be there. I don't think it has to be a collaborative thing, but can be amended. The agreement just would simply state that, here's what we're willing to put up. If we don't solve the power problem, the deal's done at a twenty-five thousand dollar loss. If the DDA hasn't come in, the deal's done. Yeah, I don't, I see this, the contingencies being extremely simple and straightforward and the finances, you know, outlined. But if the city said, you're going to trust me and authorize twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, I have to show proof of payment to the skating company of that amount? That's also fine, as long as the city's actually approving their role in doing this and using the park, then that would be okay as well.
So John, what I hear is that the motion that Commissioner Collo put on the table was basically, I mean, a lot of that, saying, hey, look, we want to move forward. We don't want to waste any time. We don't want the generator, so it's contingent upon, you know, the direct source of electricity with DTE. And it's dependent on the DDA being involved in this with an amount of, did you give?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. And then I think the final contingency was that, you know, the hundred thousand dollars or sixty thousand, I think that's in here, sponsorships have come through. And I think those were the three contingencies.
I'll make it better, I'll make it better than that. I'll make it a hundred thousand.
Okay.
About a hundred thousand in sponsorship will come through. And I'm putting twenty-five thousand up, because I know I can raise the twenty-five. And if I don't, then we'll come through with it.
Okay.
And then I would just put a friendly amendment in there, then, that the city is to enter into an agreement for the twenty-five thousand, you know, that we authorize twenty-five thousand for a deposit on the rink in the meantime.
Yeah. Which I think would be pretty simple to do. And then that would, of course, all be applied towards the expenses when.
And again, the only thing I ask is that part of that is that you guys are actually approving it so if the power does come through and the DDA does come through, and I've already gone out with the sponsorship and mentioned something that if all that does happen, then we're, we're.
Yeah, we're good to go.
We don't, there's no back, turning back.
Mr. Dubac.
Just want to be clear, so what we'd be considering is we're putting up a maximum twenty-five thousand and approval of installation of the rink, pending that all the other dollars come from elsewhere?
Not all the other dollars, just the hundred thousand from sponsorship and a hundred thousand from DDA.
Okay.
And then you have all the money, all the revenue that's coming in from skate fees and skate rental fees that go against that number as well, that would all go to the city in return for, in return for the, you know, having the backstop of the rest. And that would put your liability in a hundred to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar range in a common sense world. That even gives you a contingency of saying, if our projections of skate rental fees aren't at one forty, and they were only at seventy-five, you know, then that's, you know, puts you in that one forty range of, you know, of ultimate liability for all of this.
Understood. I think, given our conversation today and our previous conversation, I think several of us feel like this is well within the DDA's wheelhouse. I think the motion needs clarity on what we are capping our investment at and what gap needs to be closed before entering into a final agreement. Now, I don't think the motion has clarity on that right now. I'm willing to go forward with the twenty-five, but I do think we need to say, all right, what are the benchmarks that need to be hit for us to make a final agreement on this?
Mr. Macy.
So I was just thinking, I didn't like putting the hundred thousand into the DDA because I'm, I wanted to leave the door open for the DDA to step up and do the whole thing. So I, that's, I guess, where I was.
Sure, then I, sponsorship from the DDA.
Right. Maybe minimum, I don't know. I agree. I think that they could put more toward, more than that towards this. So I don't want to tell them, hey, hey, all we need is a hundred thousand. Like, let's let them figure out what their, the max they can give to this.
In case they're not watching this televised meeting.
Are they one of the five? Maybe they have Comcast.
No, I do think it's, sorry to interrupt.
No, sorry.
No, I do think it's interesting. I mean, I think Commissioner Dubac's idea is interesting. I mean, there is another way. There's a lot of uncertainties. You could cap it and say, like, hey, look, the city's going to tap out at one thirty, and the DDA makes up all the gaps or whatever. But then they get, they're the beneficiary of the receipts of all of this. So there's a little bit of risk and skin in it for us. You know what I mean? I mean, yeah, the number, the way the motion is on the table right now, it's, it's a hundred thousand. So unless there's an amendment that says that the DDA will come in and, you know, with the best efforts of the city, come up with a number that makes sense between the DDA and the city to manage that risk and that expense, that would have to come as an amendment.
I'm not comfortable going forward with that to them. I'm asking for a hundred thousand from, to go to the DDA. This is also new to them, and I would be comfortable with that number. And again, I just think it creates an uncertainty to all the partners and stakeholders if that a month from now, it's not done. I am not capped at selling sponsorship. I can tell everybody that. I am not capped at selling sponsorship. And the DDA might not be capped at donating to this. And you guys have relationships with the DDA and can improve upon that deal. But I would just ask that today, from my comfort level, that you guys back up this number.
So the, so the way we have announced it, at least a hundred thousand from the DDA and at least a hundred thousand in sponsorship. And that number that we have of a hundred and thirty, one forty, eighty-nine, depending on, you know, skate rentals and admission fees, I mean, that theoretically could go to, with another hundred thousand dollars in sponsorships, that goes down to essentially nothing. I mean, based on the projection, the budget. Mr. Macy.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it doesn't go down more than that, because it has, the letter has our predicted liability is one ninety-three to two oh six. And I thought we just added, like, a hundred and forty.
No, no, that takes in mind those numbers happening. So that's the difference, Mr. Macy. So the liability is four thirty-one, which includes all the labor, the rink itself, which is one eighty-five approximately, the replacement, some contingency for sprinklers from my discussion with DPS, and, you know, and every cost imaginable that's in there. I certainly am also willing to stipulate that we'll purchase insurance as part of this, per Commissioner Dubac's comment before. It absolutely could be there, and we will respect all aspects of it. But it'd be two thirty-one would be your backstop minus every dollar that came in. So every dollar would go against that two thirty-one.
So our cap is two thirty-one, worst-case scenario, but every admission fee and every sponsorship reduces that amount.
Any sponsorship over, any sponsorship over?
Sixty.
A hundred, any sponsorship over a hundred, because you have four thirty-one, you have a hundred from the DDA, a hundred from sponsorship. And the projected revenue of the skating rentals and fees, hold on, just from November.
It's actually on the screen up there, John.
One forty.
Is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's what's projected. And even if you, again, if you came, came down and it was half of what, what happened, then, you know, the max would be one sixty if we hit half the projection. That would be the max. But again, two thirty is what I'm asking for, and that we all work hard at, I mean, let's work as a team with the DDA. But I'm just asking.
Just a quick check on that math, John. So if it's, if it's two thirty, yet we have a hundred and forty in admissions, that brings it down to ninety.
Oh, I'm sorry, ninety. But I was saying, if half of that came through.
Yeah, okay. So you're trying to be really conservative. I'm saying, based on this budget, it's ninety. So.
Yeah, it's okay.
Nine from the budget, if things are better, it goes below ninety. But if things are a little worse, say we get half, then you're saying it's up to the one third. Okay.
So then you guys now have a skating rink with corporate citizenship, DDA, if the rental comes through per projection, and you guys, it's a pretty equal, equal share to do all this.
Okay. Mr. Collo, then, Mr. Macy.
Thank you, Mr. Witz. And thank you, Mr. Witz. I appreciate you giving us that explanation and bringing this to us. You know, I, we've had a lot of discussion about here. We're really watching the sausage get made of city government here and how we're coming to this deal. More negotiating than we typically do at this table. I'm comfortable continuing to move forward tonight. This is one step in a multi-step process to get this here. You know, we will start the conversation with the DDA next. I think we all agree that's paramount. But once again, this is activating our downtown park in the cold months of the year. It's finally giving us something to do outside in our downtown. And I think that this is a home run to at least start, continue the conversation with tonight. So I hope we can at least vote to keep moving forward. I think we all, you know, we do have a member of the DDA sitting here with us, who I think's got a big meeting in three weeks. You know, understanding that you have, you know, the commission here asking for this, if we pass it, I think a lot of us, you know, can also leverage some personal relationships we have with various DDA members and talk to them. You know, this is a home run for the city. And I just, I hope that we can continue moving forward here right now.
Yeah, I'll just add, I'll just add, I think, I think that's exactly the truth. I mean, I think Mr. Witz did a good job kind of explaining all the dynamics going on. You know, sometimes timing is just really, really tough with city budgets and, you know, staff time and all of that stuff. And I don't think to anybody's fault, we're kind of pushed against a wall here. And we're pushed against a wall that is, is, you know, not a horrible situation. It's actually, I think, what John Witz said, magical. We have the opportunity to deliver something that I think our community really has been looking forward to, something they had a taste of last year that was wildly successful in an off-season when it comes to skating, you know, February and March. I mean, the big season is November and December. I mean, that's where you want people here shopping for the holiday season. I think from a recreational point of view, the more you have it, the more you're going to get, because it's sometimes it takes a while for people to understand the words. So I think in December, we're really going to start to see this thing peak and end in January. So I think the stretch of getting fees and rentals is going to be not hard to make that up. I think we're going to do better than we think. And I also believe that with a little bit of work, we'll get the sponsorships to come in. I think our exposure at ninety thousand is tolerable, based on the way this motion is. I don't think it'll get worse. I think if anything, our exposure goes down from ninety. But again, a lot of decisions we make up here are a little bit of, I don't want to say speculation, but I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. The one thing we could do for sure, a hundred percent, is to say no. And we know that for certainty, we don't have any ice skating or any, you know, amenity and activation in a park. We know that. But if we go out on a little leap of faith, we were high, you know, hyper-successful with our investment in Winter Blast. It helped our businesses during a very tumultuous period. I think Commissioner Collo even thinks, said, you know, we may be seeing even a little bit of rise of, you know, especially in November, December of COVID and other types of sicknesses.
Dr. Witz said, I just repeated it.
You know, this is a great opportunity for people to get outside, get some exercise, stay healthy, be healthy. Commissioner Dubac?
Sorry, I still just need clarity on what the motion is committing us to. I'm not, I'm not clear on what the motion commits us to.
Let me, let me try to, Commissioner Macy, do you want me to give that clarity first, or do you want to?
Wait one second to give the clarity, because I'm still, I'm still reading these numbers as better than we're stating. So, you know, I guess, just give me a second here. But I'm looking at the charts here, and it leaves us at two hundred and six is our liability. And then that, in those numbers, they only include sixty thousand of sponsorships, and now we're saying it's a hundred, it's another forty. And then we're saying another hundred from the DDA. So I'm getting two oh six minus one forty. That's, that's not ninety. It's sixty-six, right? Or, yes?
I.
Anyway, I'm seeing, I'm seeing this numbers having come way down based on that a hundred and.
I think we're getting confused, and I appreciate Mr. Witz, but I think he was trying to be ultra-conservative, saying that even if we only get half the rentals, only half the attendance, you know, just trying to show like that. I'm sure that's why he's a successful business and operator, because he always thinks the worst case.
Right. And I understand what he's saying. Like, I don't, he doesn't want us to cap it at sixty-six just because that's how the numbers turn out. But I'm just saying, it looks to me like what we've said tonight has driven the number down quite significantly. And I guess another thing, we talked about the skate rentals. They also, there's private rentals in here that's listed as ten thousand. I actually know people last year who were talking about doing rentals and doing parties and things at the skate rink, but it was only here for a brief period of time. I kind of wonder if that's going, I don't know. It seems like if it's here for a long period of time, that's going to be something people are interested in too.
Kind of like a pavilion at a park. Hey, my poor kid, two of my three kids have winter birthdays. They feel so short-changed.
Okay, that's all. I just want to clarify the number.
Yeah. No, I'm with you. I just was taking the number that Mr. Witz had calculated, but looking at the numbers, you know, I was coming to a similar conclusion that it was even below ninety.
Yeah, okay. That's all I want to say.
Mr. Collo.
So I just want to clarify, at one point, I offered the friendly amendment that we also agree on the twenty-five thousand.
So why don't you just make that amendment?
Yeah.
So it's, so it's not so much friendly, it's neutral?
Can you just withdraw this?
Yeah, just say, yeah, can we, can we withdraw the amendments?
It belongs to the table. You can't.
No. Well, we don't have an amendment on the table. Nobody made a motion. So right now, the motion that's on the table, I'm going to, I'm going to look at City Clerk Ellis here.
Yes, Commissioner Collo made a motion, was seconded by Mayor Proton Macy, and then a friendly amendment was made by Commissioner Collo to enter an agreement for a twenty-five thousand dollar rate deposit. But it was not agreed upon by Mayor Proton Macy at this point. So we're kind of hanging at a friendly amendment at this point. And you can add that to the original motion.
You go with that.
And I just put that in, it's fine, yes, yes.
So you guys moved for an amendment for the twenty-five thousand, and Commissioner Macy, you seconded that amendment?
Yeah.
So we can vote on that amendment, just to make it a little bit more solid.
Yes, I'm sorry. Let's pretend I did it then.
What is the original motion?
Okay. So the original motion is to move forward to permit staff to enter into an agreement that will make this a reality on the contingency that the DDA will contribute a hundred thousand.
Minimum.
Minimum a hundred thousand, and that we will get a minimum hundred K sponsorship, which sounds like we have, and that we will get, not have a generator situation where we will have the direct source of electricity. That is the motion to entrust staff to move forward. And now, if staff wants to bring that agreement back in a week, I mean, that's part of their empowerment to do so, if they feel necessary for us to give it a blessing, but that they're empowered to negotiate.
I think Mr. Leal's point is that he does not want us saying we offer, we direct staff to enter into an agreement.
In this case, because of the, I know we're clearing up, clarifying some of the contingencies that I was already thinking about in my mind, trying to draft or work with staff to draft this agreement. And so we've clarified quite a bit. The only thing that remains is, what is the city's contribution? If any, because you said that the mic, earlier, I think, numbers have been thrown around, maximum exposure could be as low as sixty thousand or as high as maybe ninety to a hundred, a hundred thousand. So this agreement, I'm sure Mr. Witz would want to see, assuming the DDA comes back with a hundred thousand, what would be the city's contribution? Because there's still a delta that is missing, which is the city's contribution, whether it be ARPA funds or general fund, whatever that, that money comes from.
I think what your point is, at Winter Blast, we had a fixed amount that we said, this is the city's dollar contribution. What we have right now is a projected budget.
Yes.
That in a way is governing that in a variable. So maybe in the spirit of the projected budget is what our, because if it comes back and the numbers come back five times higher, no, right?
Right.
But if it comes back based on these numbers we see in the budget as presented by the event organizer, then I think that, to me, it's formulaic, which is okay. I'm comfortable with that personally.
It's two thirty, it's two hundred and thirty-one thousand. If nobody shows up to skate for three months, nobody rents the rink, no one spends an additional dollar of sponsorship. We certainly don't want that risk. We're operating the rink for only the use of Winter Blast, which is major, but we're doing a lot of work. And the city leadership brought that to us to say, to make sure that the city knew what their liability was, and we just want that clarified. And I think we all, from a common sense perspective, are going to beat the heck out of that number down. But we just need an ultimate backstop of the two thirty-one, which is the full amount of the cost, less the DDA and the sponsorship. And part of that agreement is all revenue, all skate rink revenue, all rental revenue, all skating fees go to the city to offset that number. But we just need that backdrop of the two thirty-one, in case nobody uses the rink. I mean, that's, that's.
If costs go down, we won't hit the two thirty-one. If revenues go up, we won't hit the two thirty-one. And if expenses double and the trigger's still pulled, we won't go above the two thirty-one.
Exactly.
Not that that would happen, because no deal would be signed unless we have.
If you get more from the DDA, the number goes down.
They're charging us. Yeah. Mr. Collo.
I don't know how to put that cost into this contract, right? Because this isn't, John Woodson Associates isn't paying any of that cost, right? This is, he's.
This is, he's, he's managing a city function that we're doing. So that cost is on us to, to bear. And it's, it's the cost of the rental. Now, like Mr. Witz said, every person that pits, laces up a pair of skates that they rent from us and jumps on the rink brings that cost down. Every new sponsorship brings that cost down. The DDA could, for 200, $331, could provide free skating for everyone in downtown Rock. I mean, that, that's also an option. There's, and we just saw a business owner come out and contribute $40,000. This is a business owner who's on North Main Street who, you know, won't see direct foot traffic as a result of this, just loves the city. So I think that this number's going to keep on going down as, as time goes on.
I think to Mr. Leal's point, what is that number that allows city staff to know that it's a not to exceed under the, you know, worst scenario, 231,000 is maybe what the guideline you're looking for based on the budget?
Well, that would assume, that number would assume that DDA is not involved. Is that correct?
No, that would assume that they are involved.
But you don't have any rentals.
But you have no rentals.
Yeah, we presume that they are involved and then every other dollar and, and that's one thing I was in agreement with the city manager and deputy city manager on, which was to establish what is the ultimate liability, just to make sure that it's outlined because it would not be ours unless, as you said, if it went over cost, we would take responsibility for it. You know, so there you go.
I guess the question, I think that's a number that the city manager, to find out what, what number is, is more appropriate. I mean, it's, it's got to be a number, at least, and not to exceed, but I'm deferring to Paul as to budgetary amounts, that, that is his purview.
I mean, you could probably better articulate it than us. I think you know what we're trying to do.
We have an understanding, so it's, it's based on the framework that's been discussed that, of making that work. And so it's, it's a matter of where we identify where that source of funds is coming from. So.
Do you feel, do you feel good with the motion the way it is? If we move forward, you know how to negotiate and put forward a-
We do.
Ms. Alice.
Before you go any further, can you make sure you vote on the friendly amendment?
Yes, just the amendment. I mean, just because Commissioner Collo is extremely friendly.
Is it because there's so much distance between me and the rest of the commission tonight?
Yes, okay, so the amendment right now is the 25,000. You guys want to vote on that real quick, clear that so we don't forget? All right.
Just, please re-articulate it.
25,000, no. The, the 25,000 that the city will enter into an agreement with the event organizer to secure the 25,000, to secure the ice rink, non-refundable, as we continue to negotiate the terms of the contract that are in the original motion with the contingencies.
Okay, and what's, since this is an amendment to the original motion, what's the original motion?
That staff will be directed to move forward in good faith to negotiate with the event organizer to manage it, secure everything required with the contingencies of 100,000 DDA contribution, 100,000 sponsorship.
At least, at least 100,000.
At least, yeah, I keep, I keep, I have, I have it right here. I'm just not reading what I wrote down.
A minimum?
Minimum, 100,000 and then DTE, direct connection.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll get this other note that's obsolete, cross that out. Okay, so I'll call for the vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so now we're back to the original motion that now includes this $25,000 securitization effort. Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable putting a $100 price tag on the DDA. If we say 100, they're going to bring 100. The chances of them just coming above and beyond, but we're saying they know that we're on the hook for the rest seems highly unlikely to me. I think we need to say what we need to see the DDA in for sure in order to move forward.
So what's that number?
I mean, I mean, we, Commissioner Collo put out 100,000. You know, for our liability could still ultimately be zero at the end of this. You know what I mean? Their liability is 100,000 guaranteed.
Well, that would be good. I mean, if we say the DDA is 200, we are first dollars out on any sponsorship and revenue that comes in. Once we get to zero, then the DDA can start digging out. I'd rather, I'd rather be highly likely that our liability goes to zero.
And I'd rather not go forward with that than just interject because I've already, I've put 100,000 on the table, I've worked hard for that. Your liability, if this all goes well, looks like it's going to be south of 100. I'm looking for a partnership and everyone's support, you know, the DDA, the DDA could do more. But that's, I, I've talked to the DDA and I need some certainty and comfort. I know what numbers have expressed that they're willing to do and, you know, have worked hard to make this a very manageable situation for, for a collaboration among everybody, a good partnership that all makes sense to, to work out. And I would ask that 100 is such a, it's a, it's a big number.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Witz. I just want Commissioner Dubb to be able to finish. I'm, I'm concerned about 230,000 liability regardless of how the math works out on paper. That's still, in fact, what we would be adopting with this motion, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
The only safeguards being if the DDA comes in less than 100 and sponsorships come in less than 100, that would, that would neutralize the argument. As the motion stands right now.
DTE.
And DT. And DT.
But, I mean, in the event that, you know, if we're worried about financial exposure
of 231, you're basically saying that nobody's going to come and use it, which I'd say you wouldn't kill it on the financials, you'd just kill it on the concept on itself. You know what I mean? So I think for me, you're right, that is a risk, definite risk. But I think based on the projections that we see here, based on what we did last year and based on the ability to, maybe the DDA kicks in more, maybe we have some other opportunities and I, and I think it'll be so wildly successful that we will approach zero. I mean, we may even have a net, net. But now, the DDA doesn't get that. That's the difference, is that we're on the hook for the 231, but we're also on the hook for all the extra benefit that comes in with it as well. You know what I mean? We get the, we get the upside.
Understood. My frustration lies in the fact that this is DDA bread and butter, it's why they exist and yet we're the ones taking on the liability.
Commissioner Collo?
So Commissioner Dubb, why don't we leave the motion as is, but send Mr. Briggs to the DDA with a request of 331,000. And if anything that's made above and beyond rentals, the DDA gets the money. We will spend all the skate rentals, all the, everything, all the income. So now that the DDA has paid for it, they can then reap the benefits of it. So that could be a negotiation tactic that, you know, as we're working on that, you know, we need at least 100, but if you want to take this on, if, you know, if you want this and you think this is a good idea, you can have the benefits.
I, I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Collo, except for the challenge that we have. We're in this situation where we probably, in a, in a more ideal world, we would have been having this conversation with the DDA two months ago, three months ago.
Yeah.
And with that statement, it makes sense, but you're arguing with yourself like 20 minutes ago that said, hey, you know, this is the situation that we're in and it's a choice on us whether or not we're going to have an ice rink or not. And if we want to have an ice rink, we got to come back with something reasonable, knowledgeable, and, and we're the ones that have to take the risk as opposed, because the other risk now, that inserting with any sort of beyond 100,000, if the DDA just rejects it, sends it back and we miss this whole opportunity, because November is right around the corner.
Well, and, and that's what I'm saying, leave the motion as is. Let them know, we need at least, if we don't get 100,000 from them, at least 100,000, this is dead on arrival.
You're saying a counter, leave the, leave the room open for the DDA to come back with a counter that says, well, we'll full, full the whole bill, but we want all the skate rentals and everything. That's an option too.
Yeah, so tell them, yeah, they can have, you can have it all, DDA. This, you can have the revenue, you can have that. We need at least 100 because, you know, we're going to make it happen this year.
So they accept the 100, it's a done deal, but if they come back and counter and say, well, we'll put the 331 in, but we want the skate rentals, okay, the city will agree to that. It's indifferent to the event organizer, to the ice rink, doesn't matter.
Exactly. This is internal, this is behind the scenes here, but this is just giving Mr. Briggs some direction, but let's move forward with this. Let's, you know, let's bring this to our downtown. We can't change what didn't happen two months ago. We can change what will happen in two months. So let's have this now and then continue to work behind the scenes to get this where we need it to be.
I'm fine with that. I think that's actually a, you know, if they want the upside, I think you're hearing at least two of us don't mind giving away the upside. But where we stand right now is not ideal, it's not perfect, it's not the way I would have done or I wanted it, but doesn't change this moment at July 25th at 10:11 PM, where, you know, we're between, not a rock and a hard place, but, you know. I can't think of a dad joke that relates to ice, so you know it's getting late and I'm tired. Anyways, this conversation has snowballed.
Call the question.
Call the, yeah, call the question.
Okay. Who's calling the question?
Macy said it first.
Don't, don't, it's okay, I'm joking, it's fine.
Mr. Macy, are you calling the question?
I feel like Mr. Leal's supposed to tell me I can't.
That's not, it's not an actual move, you can't. Calling the question would need a second.
Can I call the question?
I basically said, Commissioner Collo, stop talking.
Can I call the question?
Mayor, stop talking.
The mayor can always call the question.
The mayor can call the question whenever he wants.
Can I call the question?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
You can, you can call the question. I just was curious because I had a query last week about the process for calling the question under Robert's Rules of Order, which requires a first and a second.
Right.
No debate, it's just, and then the vote has to be two-thirds vote. So that's the formal Robert's Rules of Order process. That's not what you followed. Robert's Rules of Order is not always strictly followed by governing bodies across the country. It's just, it helps you stay within the guardrails to conduct your meeting and finish and accomplish the business that you need to do.
So why don't I do this? Anybody wish to speak that hasn't spoken already twice? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Absolutely clear as ice. Mr. Witz, thank you. Please no hard feelings about the presentation opportunity. I think we just jumped the gun on a motion and as you can tell with Robert's Rules and all of that stuff, we tried to stick to them and then we completely just obliterated them. And we appreciate your efforts putting together this plan and this budget. I think we all agree this is going to be magical. It's just about us managing risk and I think we're going to have a good plan moving forward and we trust our staff. We trust you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we'll put that one on ice for a week.
You already did that.
You did that, yeah. I didn't say we were going to put it on ice. All right. That brings us to number 11, Request for American Rescue Plan Grant Funding 2022 Arts, Beats and Eats. Wait a minute, it says Arts, Beats and East Festival? Arts, Beats and Eats, okay, festival.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Commission, switching events, we're moving to this summer's Arts, Beats and Eats. And the resolution before you authorizes renewal of the grant that we provided to Mr. Witz last year. There are three enumerated uses of that money, which would be coming from the American Rescue Plan. As you heard at public comment tonight, the majority of that funding goes to local restaurants, stipends, lowering the participation fee for those in the festival. Again, the $17,000 would support the DDA's retail marketing promotion program and then the final $15,000 of that would support free inflatable activities for families throughout the festival weekend. This is an actual decrease from last year's grant, which was $80,000. City staff does not have any aduction to that and I'll await any questions on this.
Questions to Mr. Hunt? No questions. I mean, we just had like 400 questions. Oh, Commissioner Douglas. When I looked, you didn't have your hand up. I mean, what do you want me to do?
Look this way more often.
I did look that way.
I hold approval of the resolution and submitted.
We have motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. All right, discussion? I'll just say, you know, approving money to help our businesses is important and I think this will be a good tool. I'm just surprised there weren't as many questions as the last item, approving funding to help businesses, but we'll move forward. All right.
I have a question.
Commissioner Collo?
Yeah, Mr. Hunt, do you know how many restaurants benefited from this last year?
10 direct, 10 directly with participation in the festival and additional four from catering that was also applicable for the festival. So we're looking at 14?
Okay, so 14 restaurants benefited. Then I remember last year we also had the free bounce house and inflatable, so, you know, that's an entire section for kids, but General Streets Needs, that's completely free, so that's another huge win. Do you also, do you have any idea if, if plans change? I know I've heard the DA may change how they deliver the downtown dollars. If that's the case, does that change how the funds are spent?
I would look if it's an unmaterial change. This would have federal reporting guidelines attached to it. So the $17,000 that is earmarked for, if it's consistent with the activities, the Ambassador Program that occurred last year, there shouldn't be an issue. If it's a dramatic change and we would run that by our consultant on that, then we would simply eliminate that part of that money. It wouldn't meet the federal reporting requirements.
Gotcha. I've been trying to delay from here for Mr. Macy, I think I have a question, so if anyone else wants to ask something.
Commissioner Dubb?
How many questions? This is exactly the kind of investment ARPA dollars are intended for. I think it's a wise use of the money and we, we did it last year with some great success. Totally supportive of moving forward with this again.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
I missed what everybody said, but what I was going to say about this, which maybe has been said already, I think, when I heard Commissioner Dubb saying on the way in, did this last year, it makes sense, it's good for our city, it's good for, it's a good use of these funds. Nonetheless, it's very irritating to me that over the year and a half, two years now that we've had to use these ARPA funds, the only thing we are able to spend it on so far has been this. So I thank Mr. Witz for bringing us, this is a thing that we can do with our money, something that helps our city. It's a, it's a good use of it. But I wish that there had been a plan and it wasn't the only thing that we could say that we had done with this up until now. That's all I want to say about that.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All righty. 12, Proposed Ordinance Keeping of Non-Domestic Animals in Residential Areas, First Reading. All right, is this one going to be wild?
Oh, no. Very nice. Thank you, good evening. So we're back again to talk about non-domestic animals. This draft of the ordinance looks, is based off of the feedback that we received in the previous discussion. So one thing that I kind of want to recap before we get into the, the elements of, around the dangerous animal piece, is looking, listening back to the conversations that we've had. I think there was a little bit of confusion and so I just want to kind of clarify and make sure everybody's on the same page. This draft sets up both a licensing process and a registration process. And I think in some of the conversations previously, they were used a little bit interchangeably, but it actually sets up both. So, folks who had, like if I had an alligator today, I would have to come in and license my alligator because under this draft of the ordinance, it would become a prohibited animal, but we've allowed that exception. So that, that way animals that are in the community today, that have become prohibited, would be able to get that exception license and remain in the community, but the owner would not be able to go out and get more, couldn't go get another alligator, I couldn't replace my alligator if it passed away. It just is that sort of annual license for the duration of that animal's life. The registration process comes into play with the labeling of a dangerous or potentially dangerous animal. So the licensing process that happens originally for that one exception would go through the clerk's office. And then the registration process for the dangerous piece, that would be processed through the police department similarly to how dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs are handled now. So I just, that was kind of one thing that I noticed, we were having maybe a little confusion on, and where things were handled and when and why. And so I just wanted to kind of clarify that element of it. The other pieces in terms of what is prohibited, looks just like what we've previously discussed. And a lot of those elements remain the same. I'll turn it over for you to discuss the dangerous dog or the dangerous animal.
Okay, so, some, with the dangerous, last time we were here, we kind of discussed how we were doing apples to oranges situation with trying to replicate, include the dangerous, danger, to include all animals in the dangerous dog ordinance. So, my understanding of the feedback was that, you know, we liked the dangerous dog ordinance in general, but that it really, it should be separately incorporated into the non-domestic animal ordinance so that they were just separate to clarify things and make sure that provisions that necessarily could not, or we did not want to apply to non-domestic animals, but maybe we wanted to apply to dogs, we could take those out, we wouldn't have to add so much qualifying language, it was just cleaner. So the, the definitions remain the same. One thing I did wanna point out to the commission is that we did change the notice requirements in dangerous animals, that the owner of a dangerous or potentially dangerous non-domestic animal must notify the police department in person or by telephone within one hour of either of the following, the animal attacking a human being or domestic animal, or escaping the owner's property, or has ceased to be in custody of the owner. So that was one thing we changed, we lessened that time limit just because we had talked about how those things can be maybe more dangerous than a dog getting, a dangerous dog getting out, a dangerous animal may be more of a risk. We also changed the time limit to notifying the police department within 24 hours if the animal was no longer in ownership of the registered owner, the animal died, or the animal no longer lived in the city. And we also added a provision that if the owner of a declared dangerous animal fails to notify the police department within those prescribed time limits, that the, the animal may be immediately seized and proceeding can be initiated in the district court for either, you know, the euthanization or removal of the animal from the city. So those are some of the things that we incorporated based on the discussion we had that perhaps, once an animal, a non-domestic animal is dangerous, there is a greater risk than a dog being dangerous and we may want to have some additional safeguards if they escape, if they attack someone, and we wanted immediate seizure if that were the case. So that is one thing we, we did add. Other than that, the, the ordinances are similar. Like I said, we took out the obedience class requirement because again, that, I just don't think that applies. But other than that, they are similar, there are, I would say, stricter, not stricter, there are additional safeguards in here that allow for immediate confiscation of the animals that don't always exist in the dangerous dog ordinance, just based on the feedback we got, that we had more concerns about the dangerous animals. We, we also did, we also took away the three escapes rule that's in the dangerous dog ordinance and just said that, you know, non-domestic animals at large, if they escape, then they could, even once, and they could be subject to a thing, a civil infraction, as opposed to giving, with dogs, we allow three escapes before there's a civil infraction. So, we did some of those safeguards that I think we talked about with the additional concerns that the commission had over just the inherent nature of perhaps more exotic I think that is really most of the changes we made to the dangerous animal ordinance based on the feedback, but if anyone has any questions or comments, obviously I'm happy to answer them.
Gotta give enough time. Okay, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, I just wanna thank the two of you, this has been a long process, so I think we're finally getting there. So just looking through a couple things, let's start on, let's see, just page one of the ordinance. This is more of a spacing issue, but under definitions B, 1, 2, and 3 are kind of like spaced unevenly. So, that's just more of a technical thing. Going down and looking on definitions under, let's see, D, number one, we call out leopards and jaguars and then smaller African cats. One, I know at one point we had specifically said we do wanna say African caracal cats. What type of African cat would be allowed? Because I would just assume, well, it's a domesticated house cat from Africa, it's not, it should not be allowed.
So, the ordinance goes through all cats except for domestic house cats. So there are other types of cats that are similar in size to a caracal cat? So it really just kind of delineates some of those things, but any type of other cat, I hate to say mid-sized cat, I don't know what the right, it's not a big cat, but it's not a house cat either, anything other than a house cat would.
There's also some pretty scary Asian cats out there. I know like the tigers at the zoo are from Asia and they're extremely terrifying, so.
Big cat.
Big cat.
That's defined by the state.
Just to clarify that many of those animals, the big cats, are already prohibited via state law. So, we're covered in that sense since we can't allow them because the state doesn't allow them, so our city can't allow them. So that is tigers, lions, things like that. The state has already taken care of that.
Or tigers and lions that create a liger.
You know, that is not in the state ordinance as far as I know, but.
I think it would be covered.
I think it would be covered over this.
Not the attorney, but I feel like it would be covered.
So then moving down to the prohibited non-domesticated, non-domestic animals, Section A calls out the previous Section 1.5. Section 7 of that is venomous, venomous reptiles and snakes. I thought we had previously said that we wanted to, if it was venomous, it would be prohibited.
So, in my review of the tape, I heard that, but I did not hear that from all of you. So, that is an amendment that you all could make tonight if you would like.
Cause I think we had decided, well, Lisa did not review.
I mean, my recollection is there was some conversation about like how poisonous is poisonous and the potential of like a really poisonous versus a kind of poisonous and what, do we have antivenom? That gets really tedious to put in an ordinance.
So like, yeah.
I think we just try to draw the line somewhere and put a line, you know.
So.
Poisonous is poisonous, right? So I would think that we would, when it comes, let's say snake, you know, there's some people keep a boa or a constrictor as a pet, but a king cobra, we can all decide, you know, agree, does not belong in the city. I see Commissioner Dubb is a big king cobra fan over there. So I think that's, you know, maybe something we can talk about as a group here. I would be in favor of also permitting those venomous animals. And then the last thing I have is just number three, another technical thing under the prohibited, prohibited non-domestic animals, just change the Detroit Zoo to Detroit Zoological Society.
Commissioner Dubb, Commissioner Macy. Okay, just so I'm clear, and I think we've gotten close to a reasonable place on this without any additional amendments or parsing of different breeds of animals and things. The only animals we would be licensing would be those that are on the prohibited list that are grandfathered in.
Yes, I have it today, I've had it, I can show you I've had it, and, and I take that opportunity to license it. So what the ordinance specifies is they have 120 days. So if you have it and you don't license it with 120 days, it's treated like you just bought it.
So going forward, those, those animals move out or age out, that list dwindles, so it's not a permanent burden on the clerk's office, it's not a growing burden, it's a one-time thing, these folks gotta do this, and then that should be the end of it, we just have it on record which of these prohibited animals, animals are in the city.
Yes, that, that would, that would be the goal, is that it, it just, it tapers off over time. How long depends on the species, I guess we could be doing this for a while.
Okay, and that also provides provisions for when and how we might seize those animals and people lose that, that grandfathering privilege. That all seems very reasonable to me.
Okay.
So.
Take it.
I'm just gonna leave it be. Thank you. Commissioner Macy.
So just, I didn't notice one type of severability way at the end, it's missing in there, but I was, I'm confused about the venomous now, so could you recap for me what, what it is that Commissioner Cole was just asking?
I think that at the last meeting, there was some discussion about whether, so venomous animals are listed as a non-domestic animal, they're part of the definition of non-domestic animals, but they were not prohibited non-domestic animals because there was some discussion at the last meeting of whether or not those, we wanted to prohibit all venomous animals or not, or some, and so we did not list them as prohibited animal, non-domestic animals that need to be register, licensed, excuse me. But we can make that change and require and prohibit venomous or poisonous animals.
Yes, I just didn't feel like I heard enough of you or could see enough of you nodding to feel like I had consensus on that.
Okay, so when you presented it to us, you presented it venomous is prohibited or not?
So venomous would be an animal that is allowed. So under, the way it's currently drafted, let's start there. Is that it is, it would be defined as a non-domestic animal, but it would be allowed. So you wouldn't have to register it, you wouldn't have to license it, no, you, you can have it, nothing you have to do unless it becomes a dangerous animal. What, the question I think is being asked is should it be on that prohibited list like an alligator or some of the other animals that we've prohibited? So that's.
If it were, then existing ones would be grandfathered, no new ones could now.
Yes.
And only grandfather, and only grandfather to the extent that they would have to actively get the license.
In the next 20 days, okay. I feel like I'm sort of starting to get it.
But they would fall under, there's, so there's a couple provisions, like breeding, for example, where you would not be able to breed non-domestic animals. And that applies to all of them, whether they're exempt, not exempt, whatever, if it's a not, for defining it here as a non-domestic animal, you can't do it in a residential area. If that makes sense.
Snake eggs in the sewer system.
Oh my God.
So while we're, while we're splitting hairs, I will point out that poison is a toxin that gets into the body by inhaling, swallowing, or absorbing through the skin, and venomous is when the toxin is injected into you. So technically, there aren't any poisonous snakes unless they spit on you and it's absorbed through your skin.
I think that's why we just. Poisonous, so the ordinance says poisonous animals, snakes I think just make a convenient example, but it does say poisonous or venomous animals in the ordinance.
There are some animals that are venomous.
And poisonous animals?
I've been watching Wild Krabs with Henry for the last three years, I can tell you all about it.
There's frogs, I think that like if you touch them.
Poisoned frogs.
Okay.
I think, I've learned a lot about animals, of course, on my planet here so far, more than I ever thought I would.
Okay, I, I'll hold, Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, we've kicked this around a lot. We have, with this one issue, and we, we have this ordinance, I think the ordinance is a place where we're not being overly burdensome on residents or on staff. We are trying to accomplish some sense of order, what's allowed and what's not allowed. I think if we start parsing species and, and, you know, spiders have venom, so like what, man, we gotta go through all the different species of spiders and say what's, I just, there's just, I, I just, I don't see value, I mean, there's 4.5 million dog bites a year and like 10 alligator attacks, I feel like we're spending a lot of time solving a non-problem. I think this is a reasonable policy that gives us semblance of control, so if we have the kind of issue we had with the cats, there is a law for us to, to lean on, which is all we're trying to accomplish here. I, I don't wanna start solving problems that don't exist and creating new ones. I will move for approval at first reading.
Motion by Commissioner Dubb, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, discussion? Commissioner Cole.
I, I guess to talk about this premature motion here, or motion here, does it include all the changes that we talked about, the formatting changes, the spelling error that was found, all, all those different items that have been brought up by various commissioners?
Not all the different items, the change of the Zoological Society, sure. And, yeah, a solid proof for you for spelling errors, okay. Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, there's a few things in here that, you know, like I look, I, I don't have any issues with it, I think if there, we have a good framework now, so if all of a sudden king cobras become exceptionally popular and legalized in Michigan, we could sit back and say, oh, hey, why don't we update that ordinance to include king cobras? And it's a two-minute conversation versus a, you know, two-hour conversation. Some of the smaller things like, you know, if, if the animal dies and they have to report it within 24 hours, I mean, that seems a little steep to me, but, you know, if you want to take the, it's a privilege to own an animal and if it's on the list and you have to report back in 24 hours and if you don't, I'm pretty sure, you know, the chief's not gonna have someone knocking on doors and putting them in front of the magistrate, you know, their favorite alligator died, you know. And then I think that the registration process is a good way to protect people with their, their pets that they have today, they don't have to, to give them up, but at least they're wearing Royal Oak, you know, if you wanna continue, you know, just double check and understand the ordinance. The only thing that I have a little bit of question about, hopefully we don't strong-arm people, is that we can't just, I mean, I know, everybody's supposed to know the law and everything, and I'm sure people that got their animals today that are gonna be on this list check the laws. I don't think they're checking every day to see if Royal Oak's now prohibited their species of animal and like, hey, they had so many days to come in and do whatever. I just think that hopefully that's a case where we look at it from a case-by-case basis, see if the person's being honest and see like, hey, you know, they had no idea that they had to register this because, you know, we have books of ordinances, not everybody's keeping tabs, you know. So that, those are things that, I mean, discretion and, you know, change can manage throughout, so I'm, I'm good with it, I don't need to nitpick it at all, so I'm fine. Commissioner Cole.
I just have one more question about the ordinance itself. There's a section 195-43 that talks about reporting a potentially dangerous, a complaint rather, filed by someone. Who, where does that complaint get filed? Does that, PB?
So it gets, when you say, which section are you referring to under 193?
One, so 195-43's A1, the paragraph before the group were numerals. So, upon complaint of any person that a non-domestic animal is dangerous or potentially dangerous, yada, 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 where does that complaint go to?
Oh, so that would be, for instance, if someone says, my neighbor has a, I'm gonna use alligator because that's kind of been the theme, my neighbor has an alligator and it keeps, it's gotten out.
Yes.
And it's like snapped at my dog. They would call the police or the animal control officer.
So, so the police, so this is a non-agency complaint number, file a, a report at the station.
Correct, and that's how, or the animal control officer, or the police would dispatch the animal control officer, I think, depending on, and that's how we, that's generally how the, when people make a complaint, for instance, about a dangerous dog, that's how those start is someone calls and says this dog has been out, you know, I've been out, it's been out three times, and then that's when, that's how that gets rolling.
So, so just for clarity, the police will show up and say, see you later, alligator?
Yes, absolutely. And we can maybe get that on a T-shirt for.
Sorry.
We need to get rid of that T-shirt.
I know, I couldn't help it. Any other questions? All right, nice work, good job, very positive experience here. It's a tough, tough thing to tackle and you guys did a really good job, definitely good teamwork there, so I appreciate it.
Finally escaped this.
What's that?
Nope, nope.
Oh, man.
You sure can't call the question?
All right, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All righty. Okay, this brings us to, thank you, Approval of Administrative Rule Changes, Executive Department Heads. executive department heads. And Mr. Bray, you thought you could escape this, but we brought you back to talk about it. I think there was some, you know, just some questions and clarity from last time that the commission had, something that, you know, we're not as familiar with with these vesting periods and everything, and hoping you can kind of elaborate a little bit on the recommendation.
So, absolutely. So overall, this is brought to you on compensation changes that follows, it's consistent with labor agreements. One issue that was brought to my attention, this is not a bargaining unit, however, there is one department head who kind of acts as almost like a, in a union capacity, although it does not exist. But the suggestion was made, bringing the focus to the vesting period. So this is the defined contribution retirement program, not to be confused with a defined benefit. So there's very few of the executive department heads that receive the defined contribution program, and the way it's been set up since its inception, that it takes five years to vest. What has happened and what I described in the memorandum is that in even the short time that I've been here, we've made some changes even with the executive department heads, that we have two chiefs, not in the police department, but essentially are retired, that we have a continuation of agreement. We also have another department director that retired from a neighboring municipality who came out to initially, just to help us out for a certain period of times, four years later, that person's still here. What's happening in the world of work is, we've all heard the term of the great resignation. So Human Resources Director Vandilar can attest that the number of applicants that we have seen on positions across the board to entry level, all the way up to executive level, leadership positions have diminished greatly. The thought is to lower the vesting period to one year, and I use the example of an en-core performer, and that was a term that I used, of someone that perhaps, that if we did have an unexpected resignation or retirement departure of an executive department head, and we needed someone to fill in that role immediately, even on an interim basis, that would be an attractive feature. I just present that to you for your consideration. If this makes it too complicated, I gave you a different option, that you could just simply, you know, approve the wage adjustment, and we're adding a new holiday and move on with that. I think what caused some confusion was, were we making some changes that impacted the existing executive department directors that have not been here five years? There's already a provision that was approved by the commission that allows where someone who has prior years of service, either in the government sector or identical type of work in the private sector, that one can apply up to five years of vesting to be applied towards that vesting period. So it's moot in relation to the existing staff here. I am looking at this as, when I thought about the request that was made, I looked at it more in the context of recruiting. Now, the, one of the concerns was, well, does this impact us financially? From actuarial perspective, defined benefits, those traditional pension programs, when you make changes to them, yes, it changes the actuarial assumptions. Defined contributions are a pay-as-you-go system. So you earn a certain amount, they have a certain percentage that's contributed into the pension account, but when the person leaves, the funding does not continue for that individual. When they leave, the funding stops. So that's the difference between the defined contribution program versus the defined benefit. So by lowering the vesting period does not create any additional financial burden. Again, I just raised that for your awareness, that it just gives us another tool in the bag, that if we are recruiting someone, that we lower that requirement. Places that I've worked in my career, they've been the gamut. The place that I've worked the longest didn't have a vesting period, that day one, whereas it can be anywhere from a year, five years, seven years, and et cetera. But I think that the world of work, especially in light of the pandemic and the change of the workforce, we're in a different environment here. And so what I'm suggesting to you is that if you agree with this notion that we lower it to that one-year period, so if we are in a, where we need to recruit someone on an interim basis, who would be interested in doing that, but will I be fully compensated? If someone asks us that, we can say yes, that if you would help out in this interim period until we either train a subordinate employee to take that firm, permanent role, or do the recruitment for the permanent position. That is an element that I'm suggesting, lumping this in with these administrative rule changes. And that was the rationale behind it, but you didn't have the benefit of me at the last meeting to give the explanation that I'm giving you now. And I provided some additional write-up on this, and this is a very contemporary issue that showed up in this trade publication magazine that we received in the city manager circle. And I kind of assumed that, but there's some research that's local government perspective that says that yes, this is something that's happening in the local government sector, and I can attest to that, and Director Vandilar's here in the audience and has stuck out to this long hour here. But if there's any questions either on what's happening in recruitment or of this waiver of the vesting period that was, it was approved by commissions long ago, that periodically come up where someone would make application to apply the prior years of service to reduce that vesting period. So that's what's presented to you today, hopefully explain that, but if there's anything else that, any questions that I can answer, we'd be happy to address those.
Just a couple quick questions on my end. Mr. Bray, thank you for that explanation. When we're talking about the vesting, we're talking about the defined contribution. So if somebody makes $50,000 a year, let's round it up to 100, just to make it easy, and the city contributes, what is our contribution rate right now? Is it six percent?
They have to defer to the-
You're going to have to answer that question for me. What's our, what's our matching program right now for department heads?
So right now, I'm getting in bed, but right now we're sitting at 5% employee contribution, 9% city contribution.
Okay, so 9%, if the employee, is it mandatory employee five?
Yes.
Okay, so we're putting 9% in, so you're talking 10% of someone's income. So they make 100 grand a year, that's a department head, that's $50,000 over five years. But if they, if they, so in year four, if they decided to leave, they would walk away with 40, but if this provision wasn't in there, they would miss out on that 40,000, you know, because they wouldn't be fully vested, correct? Or is there a formula association?
Right, I mean, so the way it typically works is the employee contribution is always vested instantly, so that 5% is going to be added. They're going to take that with them, no matter what. The 9% normally would not be until the vesting period's actually been reached.
Right. So, and that's, yeah, okay, and that's mandatory, that's what we're putting in regardless. So it's not like, hey, some people won't put, like in my organization, it's a match. Yeah. And then the other question I have in that, isn't that, it goes both ways. It's a recruitment tool, right? I mean, it helps people like know, like, hey, I'm going to take a risk if things go sideways, at least, you know, compared to my next best option, I at least have some assurances that, you know, my retirement planning's going to be somewhat regular for the two years, three years, whatever of service I put in, I have some sort of retirement, albeit it's not a pension, it's, you know, another method in form, probably convert to an IRA. The other thing too, I wonder, and now this is not a, this question is just totally hypothetical for future commissions, has nothing to do with any of our department heads, I have all the respect for them right now, but it also prevents people from sticking around to year five. Maybe in year three, they should have probably left on their own, it's miserable, they're not a good fit for the city, and, you know, it helps that exit, as opposed to people sticking around and just trying to wait for that vesting period, then leaving on, you know, year five and day one. So I think there's a couple ways to look at it. Not sure how the math works out, but it's definitely an interesting tool. I'll leave it. Okay, Commissioner Macy?
So I just want to, I think, use these things that are in here too. So people who come in with five years of government experience have zero vesting period, like they vest immediately?
Only if they complete the form and the form is approved.
Yeah, so back in November 14, you approved something in the PROTEC contract that's also been carried forward into the deputy department heads and executives, which allows for anybody to be hired in to be given up to five years of prior service credit for anything that they might have had elsewhere for an equivalent position. What that means is that if somebody comes in and is given the full five years of credit, they're going to be instantly vested. So even if this change is made tonight for one year, it has zero relevance, so that in the sense that that person, in that case, would already be vested anyway. So they wouldn't even have to wait a year.
So it says in here that it's a moot point, because it doesn't apply to anyone within this group, so that's true, no one in this group?
Correct, everybody that's currently here is already vested.
Say it again?
Everybody that's currently here is already vested.
Everybody's already vested.
So whether this change is made or not, it wouldn't affect anybody currently here.
Correct.
Okay, and it, but the other, if you get five years of government experience, then the example that you give about someone who's coming in on an interim basis with lots of experience, they would instantly vest too, right?
Did it fill the application, right?
So, you know, in order to support the city manager a little bit in that, I mean, I can imagine scenarios where we might bring somebody in that might not necessarily have direct experience in a similar position.
Correct.
But might have the experience to do that position. Or, you know, alternatively, maybe we have somebody internally that might take up the interim position prior to taking a job somewhere else. Both those scenarios, I think, I think it could definitely be a benefit to have that out there, knowing they don't have to stick around the entire time to collect that money. And, you know, also to kind of feed up what was said earlier, or to kind of reiterate that, and also talking to the finance director about it, who might have already informed you this before, but any of those funds for the DC are basically funds that have already left the city, so they're now budgeted for as in money that it's ever going to come back to the city.
But it couldn't come back to, I understand, and people keep saying that, like, oh, it's, once it's in there, it's gone, but that's not true. I mean, it is, if the person never completes their five years, and then they, you know, die, then the money comes back to the city. And I happen to know, because Chrysler is holding some very small portion of my money, and unless I go back and work for them another two years, I'm not going to get it. So there is, I understand what you're saying, that it's set aside, but to pretend that there's no cost to the city, I think is not totally accurate.
Well, I mean, the only thing I would say to that is that I don't disagree, obviously, but by the same token, when I looked at the funds that we have, and I'm sure the finance director could confirm that, it's a fairly minute amount of money, because, you know, you're also talking about typically when somebody leaves within those five years, especially if they're not at, at the higher levels of the organization, that's not a lot of money typically, in a sense, accumulating that amount of time, not saying that it's no money at all, and that that's no benefit to the city, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, it's not a huge sum. We've just recently went out to Mission Square to recoup some of that money that's been sitting around. The money, in essence, was such a small amount of money that for years, I think nobody really was missing it, so to speak, you know, we're only talking about a couple, you know, thousands of dollars. You know, again, I'm not trying to dispute the fact that, you know, it is money that the city could definitely use for something, but again, it's not a lot of money typically that ends up sitting around because of it.
Okay, this has clarified some things for me. It just feels odd to me to, that we're at this moment when we don't actually know of any recruiting that we're going to have to be doing in the next few years, to be making this change, which as Commissioner Hunt and I said last time, is, seems to us to be an unusual jump. You know, usually if we're going to do some change like this, instead of five to one, you would maybe do like a waterfall, where you're 20% vested in year one, and then 40% in year two. So this just seems like a surprising, as if, as if Royal Oak in particular is badly situated against other cities that are, and has to do this sort of radical thing. But, I mean, it's a recruitment tool, I suppose. I don't know, I find it to be, to be odd, but I appreciate the additional explanation that helps me understand the reasoning.
Well, just a clarification too, in your professional experience in the recruiting area, I would imagine like the idea of like an applicant that has a number of tenure, coming in wanting this, you know, equivalency, and having to fill out an application, accepting the job without uncertainty and all of this stuff, versus just knowing that they're covered, makes the, makes it easier to execute. And I will say, everybody in the program is already vested, so it's not a benefit to any individual department head at this point. But we did identify, and I'm just making a presumption, that we have a lot of department heads that are eligible for retirement, and so maybe this might be quickly, you know, necessary to have in the recruitment portfolio, you know, and just take care of it now versus down the road. Commissioner Colo?
I'm sorry. You know, so I had hesitations before about this, and then in the two weeks since then, talking with Mr. Bray, and I've also realized that in the private sector, when you go into a job, I mean, you're, a lot of places, you're starting your 401K or whoever savings account, and the company, you know, you're vested pretty fast, it's a 90-day, you know, it's less than a year. So that's kind of swayed my opinion back to this, you know, this isn't the worst thing, and it keeps us on par with the private sector, which is, you know, someone we're definitely competing with, and I think fair to employees.
Commissioner Rand?
Yeah, I did have concerns about this the last time, and I will say, I came in with concerns as well, but Commissioner or Mayor Pretend Macy's line of questioning did answer those questions, or get those questions answered. I think my concern really was that it is such a, largely from five years down to one year, and as Commissioner Macy stated, there's typically a waterfall, and I think today we still see that type of waterfall, when you're reducing the amounts. But given your explanation, which we didn't have the benefit of last time, it does make me feel more comfortable with this, this change that's in this resolution today.
Commissioner Macy?
So, Mr. Vandilar, for the rest of our employees, what's their vesting plan? How fast is it?
So that's currently set at five years. We actually, I want to say, actually about around the same time, 2014, the vesting actually used to be 10 years, and at the time, the commission already approved to reduce it from 10 to five years. One of the things under consideration, which maybe might help you at the time too, was to go through a staggered vesting schedule. So a lot of cities around us actually have a schedule where, for instance, at year one, year two, year three, year four, you go up to a certain percentage. Five years or less is pretty much the norm now, though. And I guess the only other thing I will add, and I think Commissioner Dubb, I think, might have mentioned that, or the mayor, where having a prior service in place, I think, you know, like you rightfully pointed out, I think is one of those things where in most people's cases that we might recruit, this is probably not going to be a big thing for them, because they probably will get that credit anyway. However, it is something that's an optional thing for the city to throw out, it is something that still requires an approval process. So if we go out to a candidate and say, well, you know, here's this program that you may qualify for, maybe not, and we might give it to you, maybe not, it gives a lot less certainty to a candidate, I think, than if we just simply can go out and say, all right, this is something, you might instantly vest, but if you don't, you know, here's this.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
Just to follow up and answer the question, it feels like maybe this is something that we're going to hear from our employees, that they would also like to have their vesting period dropped if we're doing this for our executive department heads.
There's certainly, certainly a chance. I mean, you know, by the same token, also having communicated with our Labor Council about this, it is not necessarily, in his professional opinion, too, it is necessarily unusual to do this at an executive level. So, you know, if the other groups approach us with this, I mean, that's something we're going to have to deal with, and, you know, I don't disagree with you, that's something that they might come back to us with.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I'll move approval of option one as submitted.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion.
Yeah, I, I'll add, I felt this way last time, HR is, I've worked in HR, and we have experts here, we have an HR director, we have a city manager with great experience in this, it was well-versed in the best practices of the industry, and I'm absolutely inclined to follow their recommendations.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All righty, that brings us to 14. Discussion on how the city will inform voters about the two millage proposals as requested by Commissioner Douglas and support from Commissioners Purush and Colo. My guess since Commissioner Douglas- I guess since Commissioner Douglas is the first one listed here, I'll hand it over to her.
Okay. Very much appreciate the informative letter that the city sent out regarding the library millage. It's very clear that local governments are allowed to present objective information to their citizens about issues that are on the ballot, and it does seem appropriate for us to take that same course of action with the two millages that will be on the November ballot, those affecting parks, recreation, forestry, and animal shelter on one hand, and seniors on the other. And I just wanted to make sure that staff were informed about the timing of that and what's necessary, so that, because we see more and more with early voting and no excuse absentee voting, more and more people are voting absentee. And so if I may, I'd like to hear from the city clerk as to what the deadlines will be for absentee ballots, and what she expects we will see in terms of absentee voter volume with the general election. Ms. Hallis?
Good evening. Just to answer some of your questions, right now, our permanent AV list consists of just over 20,000 voters. Ever since the 2018-3 passed, we've seen a huge uptick in absentees, and that's definitely the preferred way of voting in our city. We are looking to be sending out absentees for the November election the first week of October, so we will have those out. I'm looking at approximately a 70% turnout, and it definitely seems like, in our community, we have about a 60, 40%, a 60% voting absentee, 40% voting at the polls. So it's definitely changed.
So to that end, oh, sorry, so just concluding, is that, does that suit the staff's timetable? Are you, do you have this in the mill? Do you have text written so that you'll be able to meet those deadlines?
Yes, there's information that we've put together regarding that, it's customary practice from, so what, what's been done previously is that we produce the, the letter that's reviewed by, you know, the, the city attorney, make sure that we're not advocating but to simply providing information. Also, that through WROK, that we put together five things you should know, is, is a quick video tutorial. There are a couple other publications that this would be timely, one a little bit more than the other, but Royal Oak Today, which would be mailed out in late September. Then there is also the Insight Magazine, but I think we just missed their deadline, but I think I, I know of someone I can talk to that can include that in there. So point I'm making is that, that, yes, that this is a good time to bring this up now, and commonly on projects like this is, kind of take a backward calendar. So if we look at, you know, October, when, when the, the ballots are out, that we really need to get that information out and, and working that back, and, and how can we put together something very concise and have that reviewed by legal counsel so it's, it's ready to go? Plus, we have to allow enough time to tee that up with, Ms. David has a pretty good handle of, of talking to the printer, what, what their deadline is, that the drop dead, that we have to give that to the printer, that they can print it, and then through the bulk mailing, that it arrives in the mailbox, because it's so critical that, that, that piece of information is arriving the same day or in the same week that the absentee ballot is showing up, so.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Dubach? Ms. Hallis, just one point of clarification, when you refer to the permanent absentee voter list, that is a group of people who receive automatically applications to vote absentee.
Correct.
And not ballots.
Correct.
Okay, there's a lot of confusion amongst Republican gubernatorial candidates about that, just want to make sure we're, we're absolutely clear about what that is. Thank you. Anybody else? No more discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So that brings us to item 15, which is the last item that was added, the approval of the agenda, which is to, I'm paraphrasing here because I've got the wrong sheet, to discuss council's recommendation from closed session related to the pending litigation, Dana Woodward versus the city of Royal Oak. Commissioner Macy?
I move to permission for outside council to proceed and stay in case we reverse city of Royal Oak as discussed in closed session.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All righty, brings us to the end of our agenda, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of this fine city that we live and love in, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think it's time to put the meeting on ice.
Oh, man.
Let it go, let it go.
Oh, I like it, that's a stretch, but it's a good one.
Thank you.
Someone saw Frozen Junior this week.
I drew that. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion on this motion?
Call the vote.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourn.